Good evening, everyone. I am Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. I am going to start off with roll call of our commission members and then turn it over to our chair. So I've got Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted.
Here.
Matt Huck Wagner.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Inez St. James.
Here.
James Ratcliffe. Was that James? James Ratcliffe? Okay, James is not on at the moment. Matthew Bandle. Okay, and Mike Walsh already notified us that he would not be attending this evening. So we have our full six commission members and no alternates this evening at the moment.
Okay, thank you so much, Inez. Good evening, everyone. This is Inez St. James. Welcome to Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Meeting. Today is Monday, October 4th. Welcome to all the presenters, folks from the community, and of course, all of you commissioners. Thank you very much for volunteering and for your time today. All right, Scott, if you can read the legal notice, I would appreciate it, please.
Absolutely. Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold an online public hearing Monday, October 24, 2022, at 7:00 PM on the following applications. George Sarris, application for change of zone from R20 to R12, and special permit for two-family use for property located at 230 Main Street U. Felicia Enos, applicant, application for special permit for home business, a daycare at 130 Red Oak Hill Road, R30 Zone. 80 South Road LLC and Sager Development LLC. Application for amendment to the zoning regulations to add the South Road Opportunity Zone, SROZ. Change of zone from B1-R40 to SROZ and site plan approval for multifamily residential community. Proposed pursuant to CGS 8-30G for properties located at 62 South Road, lots 8864 and 8880 South Road. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this online public hearing. The link to this meeting can be found on the Town of Farmington's website at the address on your screen. A copy of this proposal is also online at the address on your screen or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, the sixth day of October 2022, Town Plan and Zoning Commission, Inez St. James Chair.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
All right, we're going to start with.
Madam Chair, I just want to note for the record, I believe James Ratcliffe joined us. James, are you online and can hear us?
I am, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, James. James, we do have all the voting members in today. Of course, you may ask questions, just like everyone else, but you are not a voting member this evening.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for joining us. All right. So we have several new business items. The first one is a 8-24 referral, and it's regarding a purchase of two properties, 1535 Farmington Ave. and 1541 Farmington Ave. For the purpose of a potential bridge project and riverfront open space. And who do we have, Shannon?
We have our Director of Public Works, Russ Arnold, is on the line to discuss this request with everyone this evening.
All right, thank you.
Are we good?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. I am Russell Arnold. I am the Director of Public Works and Town Engineer for the Town of Farmington. This 8-24 referral comes from the October 11 Town Council Meeting for our public hearing that we had at that meeting, which we discussed the purchase of these two properties. Shannon, can you go to the next screen? There you go. These properties are located directly across from the Town Hall. 1541 and 1535. 1541 has a small apartment on it right there that you see. 1535 is the main house. Two properties are owned by the same individuals. Pat Murray and Kathleen Venkowsky. This location is part of the bridge, proposed bridge that we're looking, getting constructed across from Monte. And we would continue Monte Drive over the river to New Brighton Avenue. This started, well, a bridge crossing, another bridge crossing started back in 98 with the Route 4, 1990. It was with the Route 4 corridor management study. It was voted down back then for many different reasons. I would suspect it did not pass. The original location was at Brickyard Road extending over the widest part of the river and going through Tungusus Mead into New Brighton Avenue, and there were three different options to make that connection. Since then, traffic has been, we've done a strategic plan in town. We've been working on that since I think it was 2000 or 2002. Traffic has been the number one issue in town for residents. And I'm trying to get through, get through town, whether it's during the day, at night, rush hour. We already cut through town for many towns west of us for people getting to 84 to get to their places of employment and coming home again at night. So through that plan in 2016, after all the other projects of Route 4 that were complete, near completion, including the bridge in Farmington Center, the bridge in Unionville by San Burton Harley, the 51 state project that widened two lanes out to 84, which is part of that 98 corridor study. This, the traffic never stops, right? So people, the councils at the time had said, what can we do to reduce traffic? And the bridge is still an option. And at this location, it's the narrowest part of the river. There would be no, no part of the structure itself would be in the waterway. We would be in the floodway, but not a floodplain, but not the floodway. It is, it would reduce traffic regionally by getting traffic off of the Town Center, 177, Unionville and Route 4, and Route 10 and Route 4 and Farmington Center. So the improvements would be to those corridors, allowing traffic to flow better through them while taking the traffic, PMPK and AMPK through some of the traffic coming from the high school, traveling back and forth, would not have to go into the town centers. So there would be, thus the reason to purchase these two properties in order to get the bridge installed. One thing I think that's reasonable to note, on the other side of the river, there's another parcel that we're working on obtaining as well. That one, that other parcel would make this a contiguous piece, both for the bridge, for river access, for trail access. This project opens up a lot of opportunities for the town as well. The Riverfront Access Committee from 2007 was geared towards purchasing properties, maintaining, gaining as much riverfront access as we can to have control over so that we could be in control of about one of the most valuable assets we have is the Farmington River, which people enjoy from all over central Connecticut and beyond. Another point of interest is there's a sanitary sewer right away that we have for our trunk line that runs along the river on this north side and originates in Unionville. And there's a crossing that crosses right about where 1541 is, the number, it crosses the river there, and that takes a flow from New Brighton Avenue and points from Lake Garda and Burlington. And it all heads down, then it crosses, heads down and forward to the plant. I think the project has been supported by the council in 2016. It's been supported since. In 2016, I started working with the property owners and talked, met with them, discussed the potential projects and the impact it would have on their properties. They've been great to deal with. It has been forthwith and just, they've understood it. They have, they had reservations at first, walked, worked through a lot of different issues. But they really understood what the bigger goal is for the community then. They haven't had any issue with it since their first overtaking. It was a, it was a hard meeting at first, but we got through it. They're very nice people. They've been more than cooperative and understand it's for the greater goal for the community and the region. Just with that, Shannon, I'm not sure how much more I need to explain for the 8-24 referral.
That's just the process. And then here's the aerial.
Yeah.
So this is, this is obviously the Town Hall campus, Route 4, and then coming through to New Brighton Avenue. So I think.
And we're talking about the properties only today?
Correct.
In support of this bridge possible.
Correct. It's, it's a, rest of that, right? This, this property, and then it continues over to the other side?
Correct. And the 1541 connects up with the parking lot at the Woodtown.
Okay, so it goes all the way over to that edge?
Correct.
Okay. And the 824 is a Connecticut statute?
Correct.
That says that large municipal improvements have to come through this board?
Correct, or acquisitions, large, so either improvements or acquisitions, correct.
Okay. So we, as a team, our role today is to vote or give a positive, it sounds like referral?
Correct.
For the acquisitions to support this project, okay?
Yes. That's what the request is, is for the positive referral.
I know, I need to read the agenda.
Yeah, you're okay.
All right, so commissioners, let's go through questions. Patrick, you have any questions for Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, so, so what happens exactly? So that house in that shed, so the bridge is going to the side of that shed? So when you say you're purchasing, what address is that one? Now, I don't think it's 1541, 1534, is that the upper one?
1535 and 1535 and 1541.
Yeah, yeah. So 1535, so how does that work?
So 1541 is the shed apartment that that's going to come down with the construction. And 1535 is going to be basically right up against the bridge. And we're going to need to take some of the frontage for the turning lanes that we're going to install. As you can see in this photo, Patrick, we're going to have left turn lanes east and westbound on Route 4 in order to accommodate the new turning lanes. And we're going to have a right turn lane on the westbound, heading west to get up on the Monte. So to accommodate the widening, we have to take some of the frontage as well. So when the, ultimately, you know, the people, the, the bridge is going to be right next door to their, you know, their second floor bedroom.
Okay, okay, so I understand. So you're essentially purchasing a portion of that property, right? And then 1541 is the entire property?
No, we're going to purchase both properties in full.
Okay, so the house itself is not on that property?
No, they're two separate parcels. Shannon, if you go back to the other plan, there you go.
So the alignment comes right through, but Russ, both, both buildings ultimately will be demoed as part of the construction. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
That's the intent right now, yes.
Oh, okay, I see. That's what I wasn't understanding. Okay, so 1531 is the one we see in the, the house that we see in the picture?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Correct.
Correct.
And then, and then across from there, is that, is that all open across the river? Like it shows? I mean, obviously.
No, no, it's not open. That's Jones, Jones can be constructed.
Okay. Okay.
Construction, I'm sorry, that's, that's the Joan property and right, the, the white roof you see there is Waste Materials Trucking Company, our garbage company.
Yeah.
Right across, and now across the street on New Brighton Avenue.
Okay.
And the one thing to note, Patrick, since you brought this up, that side of the river, for years, people have asked for connections from the trail to the senior center. And Shannon, can you call up the, our GIS, please?
I can.
Probably easier if you stick with the base map.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Of course.
So that parcel 8547 that you see in the middle and 319 in the green, which is our police station and community center, they will connect at either river. So we would end up, the intent is to make a river trail with an act, with access up to the trail. Shannon, can you come down to where Oak Ridge is and just kind of point out the trail system right there? Thank you. So that's our rails to trails, and we've had a lot of requests in the, over the years for people to be able to access to the senior center. And as you are aware, we don't have any sidewalks on New Brighton Avenue. So we would come down, do a crosswalk at Oak Ridge and New Brighton Avenue and create a trail system through the parcel down to the river and across the back of 377, and that's all the town property right there. So ultimately, you would have one contiguous piece of riverfront access.
Okay, yeah. And then 840, I mean, 8547, so that's something, so you guys have been working on the, the purchase of that, correct?
Correct, that's, that's coming up.
Okay.
I'll be back for that one in a short period of time. I can't tell you when yet.
Okay.
It's not a secret. We just haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, so it's underway. That's great. Yeah, no, that sounds great. I, you know, I feel like we definitely need something because you're right, the traffic is awful.
Right. But the biggest thing is during the morning and school, during, you know, to and from school, pulling all of that traffic out of the, out of the two centers is greatly going to increase traffic flow and volume through, you know, heading up 177 and through the Route 4, Route 10 corridor.
Yeah, great, thank you.
You all set, Patrick?
Yes, yep, I'm all set.
Thank you. Mike?
I have no questions. I'm in favor of the positive referral. Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Scott?
No, I have no questions either. It makes total sense. I'm glad it's the relationship with those, the folks that own those properties is going well as well. Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, just one for me. So why is sort of purchasing this now at this stage of the project, how does that help move this project along?
Matt, that's a great question. And I should have alluded to that a little bit in my presentation or discussion. By purchasing the properties ahead of time and having them in our possession will greatly reduce the design time and right-of-way phase with the DOT once the bridge gets to that point. With the DOT, it could take up to two, two additional years to get through the right-of-way phase. And being that this project is has such a big impact on the town, I didn't feel as, in my years of experience and seeing some of the right-of-way acquisitions and talking to other people in other towns going through them, it's a very cold process, as we will. And I didn't want that to be that type of process here with two longstanding, three longstanding residents. I just, I couldn't do that in good faith. Being a resident myself, a long-term employee, I wouldn't feel right just letting it sit and let the DOT handle it. It's, and you know, it just takes more time and will reduce that whole process in favor of our time, our project.
No, understood. That, that, so the Town of Farmington is purchasing it, right? Not the state or anyone else?
No, sir. This would be Town of Farmington property.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
No, 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 go ahead.
So one thing that we talked about with Pat and Kathleen is that they're in the process of building another house. They were going to, they were looking at downsizing it anyway. This kind of forced them a little bit, if you will, but they were, they bought on. And so they'll stay in the house until such time that they're going to move out. So we have, we're going to work out a lease agreement with them. And then so they aren't, they don't have to move until they're ready to move because our project is going to take three to five years at a minimum. So they'll, they'll be able to stay as long as they need to. So it's not like we're just going to purchase the property and say, okay, kick them out. That's not what our intent is at all.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I'm good.
All right, thank you. Liz?
Excuse me, I don't have any questions. It seems to be a very logical plan.
Okay, thank you. And James?
No questions.
All right. So thank you for coming in front of us. I personally wish the bridge was at Brickyard, and I know that's an old one, right? Old discussion, it didn't pass, a lot more impact to the environment. But just from a traffic routing standpoint, I think we would get more bang for our buck. But that's not why you're here. But can you just tell me, like, the next step? So you're coming in front of us, and it sounds like commissioners are in agreement for the positive referral. What, what is the next step? Like, is this something we're going to vote on? Is this a referendum? Like, what happens with something like that?
So we had a public hearing back on October 11th or 12th, whatever the Town Council meeting was?
Yeah.
To discuss the purchase. The purchase will be made with open space funds because any remaining property that was left will become open space and river access. And then, are you, Inez, are you asking about the process?
And then, do we, so, and then we vote, it becomes an item we vote for?
No, it's, it's already been, we had.
It's already part of the municipal project, got it, the Town Council approved.
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you. I just, it wasn't like fully baked in my head, so, okay?
So we have, so this stems from, and we have an additional Route 4 connectivity study that's ongoing with Pride that modeled all the traffic and what would happen with the bridge. There were many, you know, several scenarios of build nothing, do nothing scenario. If the Route 4, if the current 177 bridge goes out, what happens with this bridge in place and not in place? And so on. So there's been a lot of, a lot of good work has gone into determining that this was a good location for the bridge. And I understand, you know, your statement that you wish it was at Brickyard. That's, that location, as you said, got voted down back in 1998. The environmental impacts to that structure. Could you slide, yeah, thank you, Shannon. So when you look at the river, you would have to, that river is the widest as it is along our whole stretch. The structure itself would be about 1,000 feet long. You would have, more than likely have two, if not three, piers in the waterway. Then the roadway would come through Tungusus Mead. And if you can, there you go. Thank you very much. So that's our dump. Go back. Our, our landfill is right there. And back to the right. No, our land, slide down a little.
Yeah.
That's our landfill there. Oh, I'm to the right where you first had it, that quadrangle is the landfill, the primary landfill. And then to the right of that is another landfill area, the other pile where we, where we do all our brush stockpiling.
Okay, yep.
That's MSW as well. So the roadway would go through there. And that whole thing, if you were to turn on the wetland.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Okay. So one, one option was to have the roadway go where that rectangle is where the cursor is to the east of that, all through the wetland. And as you get down further towards Red Oak Hill Road, where the road goes, if they were, you tie it in, it's a big wetland impact.
Sure, sure.
And then what the other issue is, is you're gaining, the, the bridge is going to take away sun traffic, no matter what location you're at. Right? So it's going to improve the centers and corridors. The biggest thing is the location where we are today is there's very little impact to the wet, any wetland or water source.
Sure.
The water, the river is about 50, 60 feet wide in this location. So we can pretty much span, we're spanning the waterway.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to, we have to, during the final design, we're going to try and get, stay out of the floodplain as much as we can. If we do, we have to compensate for flood storage, which would be minimal.
Yeah. And it's one way each, each way? One lane, I mean?
No, there'll be three lanes. So you'll have a turning lane on each end of the bridge. Shannon, can you go back to that other?
Sorry. Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. We aren't designated here, but you'll have a, a left turn lane with a right and a through at Route 4. And on the other end, you'll have a left turn lane and a right lane and a, coming on the bridge lane. And one thing to note that is part of the next design phase, we're looking at New Brighton Avenue, whether we should have a roundabout there or not, what would be the best, best intersection in lieu of a traffic signal?
Sure, okay.
And then the other thing I mentioned before with Patrick is adding the turn lanes on Route 4, you'll end up increasing the storage through about 40 cars in each direction. 30 cars westbound and about 40 eastbound into AMPK, when people are, you know, trying to get to the high school.
Yeah, that's huge.
It'll be huge. And it's a dedicated turn lane with a through lane combination, right turn lane heading eastbound. Westbound, you'll have a right turn lane, through lane, and a left turn lane.
Okay.
So just that alone for this is enormous. It's huge. It's going to benefit everybody all the way around.
It looks great. Thank you. Thank you for your time today. So commissioners, if there are no more questions, we need a motion and a second for a positive referral, then we can have a conversation or obviously a vote. So we need a motion and a second, please.
Oh, yeah, Patrick here. I'd like to make a motion to send a positive referral for the purchase of 1535 Farmington Avenue and 1541 Farmington Avenue for the purpose of a potential bridge project and riverfront open space.
Matt Huck Wagner, second.
Okay. Any discussion? We're ready to vote? Okay, silence, that's good. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. You got it. Thank you. All right, the next item, we're actually passing, right, Shannon? Factory Supply?
Correct. We're going to continue, move that to the November 7th. We don't need a motion on it, that's fine.
Okay.
So, yeah, they weren't, they weren't ready for this evening.
Sounds good. All right. Next item is a quick one. We're accepting an application. We need a for, excuse me, from Carrier Holdings LLC for 1246 Dominique's Court. We need a, excuse me, a motion and a second to accept the application, please.
Okay, and if I recuse myself from, from this hearing, is it okay if I make the motion? I don't know how that works.
Yeah.
You're, you're okay to accept it. And yes, you're correct on the recusal when the hearing comes up.
Okay. All right, so Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Carrier Holdings LLC, 124 and 6 Dominique's Court for special permit to construct new homes in excess of 3,200 square feet, 4,560 square feet in, in the R30 Zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of November 7, 2022.
Okay, second?
Scott Halsted, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving right along, we're going to go into the public hearing portion of our meeting. This is where the applicant presents to the commission. We have a chance to ask questions of the applicant. When that portion is over, the public has a chance to speak in opposition or in favor of the application. And we'll take it from there. So the first item we have is an application from George
Sarris.
Sarris. It's an application for change of zone from R20 to R12 and special permit for two-family use for property located at 230 Main Street and Unionville.
Okay.
All right, and who do we have?
I believe we got George on the phone. George, if you want to unmute yourself and discuss your request with the commission, please.
Sure, thanks. Good evening, everyone. So I'm looking to do a change for the
Sure, thanks. Good evening, everyone. Um, so I'm looking to do a change for the current zoning that is R twenty for the existing home and for the property, um. Uh, acquiring the property, I, I, we've been kinda slowly working on fixing it and whatnot, and it's actually two separate homes that were, it's one home that, but it was originally built in seventeen twenty, then in eighteen thirty. Um, so there's a distinct line in between them. It's a really good application for a two-family home. Um, so that's where I want to make the change to be able to do that with this home. Um, and that's really all I'm requesting at this point.
Okay, and, uh, you, you know the property is in historic district?
I do.
Okay. And is F, does that go to historic or only if he wants to make exterior changes?
Only if there's exterior.
Okay, all right, got it, thank you. Thank you for clarification. Okay, um, is there anything else? I guess, no, just change of zone and then one family to two family. All right, uh, Patrick, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Well, I was just looking at it, so, so that's an R twenty zone and I'm just reading the agenda review. So all, so the other ones surrounding it and across the street are R twelve, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
So pretty much it's surrounded in R twelve?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That, that's it. I just wanted to make sure I understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Uh, no questions. There are plenty of other, uh, two-family houses in the area. Uh, I have no questions or concerns.
You got it. Um, how about you, Scott?
No, no questions for me either.
Matt?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. And how about you, Liz?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, and James?
Uh, no questions.
Wow, okay. This meeting made like, okay, never, okay, never mind, never mind, real early. No, this is good. Yeah, um, it, it solely fits the neighborhood. I think, Mike, you said that already, uh, and the entrance is, is it on main or is it on the side street?
There are two. There's actually one on Workplace and there's one on Main Street, but the address is Main Street.
Okay. And you keeping the garage, right? The barn? That's not.
Yeah, correctly, yep.
Okay. All right. I, I think it's pretty straightforward, uh, but it is a public hearing. Uh, so Shannon, let's see if there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak regarding this application.
Okay, uh, if anyone has called in to, uh, speak regarding this application on two thirty Main Street or have questions regarding it, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be acknowledged to address your comments to the commission. Again, anyone calling in regarding this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised for comments.
Okay, commissioners, last minute question before I close the meeting. Okay, so at this point, um, we have enough information to make a decision and the public hearing um, is closed on this application. And we need a motion and a second, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by George Saras for change of zone from R twenty to R twelve and special permit for two-family use for property located at two thirty Main Street.
Liz Sanford, a second?
Excellent. Any discussion? It seemed pretty straightforward. We're good? All right, uh, let's vote on it then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're good. All right, you are all set.
Excellent, thank you, everyone.
Yep, you'll be hearing from Shannon and Town Staff, thank you.
That's it, thank you.
All right, awesome. The next item, um, is an application from Felicia Ennis for special permit for home business at one thirty Red Oak Hill Road, R thirty zone. And who do we have?
Uh, I believe Felicia's on the line.
Oh, good, okay, great.
So Felicia, if you would, please, uh, introduce yourself, including your name and, uh, address, and then discuss for the commission your proposal.
Okay. Hi, my name is Felicia Ennis. I live on one thirty Red Oak Hill Road. Um, I am proposing a special permit to use a portion, a small portion of my home for a group home daycare. This would be for a maximum of twelve kids. Um, there is a need for home daycares. In Farmington, there are a lot of inactive daycares that were shut down during COVID. And currently, there are just a lot of daycare centers. There are some families that prefer a smaller setting for their children. Um, and to have that family-like feel. So I am proposing to start, um, a home daycare business for about twelve kids.
Okay. So we're good? Okay, we'll turn it over. Thank, thank you, uh, very much. We'll, I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Patrick, do you have, uh, like, questions for the applicant?
Um, yeah, so I see there's a pretty, a pretty large drive or long driveway going around the rear, so parking, what, what are your, what do you think in your hours are gonna be and, and parking situation?
So the hours are going to be from seven AM to six PM. The driver runs from one, uh, um, there are two entrances. It's like a horseshoe around the back of the property. So my intention is to use one of the entrances for, for, um, for an entrance and then the other one for an exit. And there are about, um, twelve or so. There's enough parking for about twelve cars, um, that is adjacent to the garage. And then there's the actual driveway that you can park and still allow for traffic, um, to go through. So there's enough parking on the property to accommodate.
Okay, and, um, what are you thinking in terms of, um, like, weekends? Are you open on the weekends or is this a Monday?
No, this is strictly Monday through Friday business.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Patrick. Uh, Mike?
Um, do you have any intention of a sign?
Yes, um, at the, yes, on either on the side of the house, um, that the daycare will be or at the entrance of the driveway.
Okay.
Whatever is allowed.
Okay, Shannon, do we need to see that first before that's?
Correct. So, uh, Felicia, if this is approved, uh, when you have the sign designed and, and the location, then you'll just, you'll need to come back and discuss that with the commission.
Okay.
Um, just based upon the location of where one thirty is, um, I do like that you have two driveways, would, should definitely help with vehicle flow. Um, what are your blind spots like when you pull out of your driveway? I mean, right at, right at the hill there? Is that where you're located?
Yes, I'm right at the hill, um. Um, there are really no blind spots. Want any of the entrances, you, um, you, you're able to see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Scott?
Yeah, so you said you have twelve parking spaces. Do you, maybe hard to answer, but do you anticipate drop-off all happening at seven or would it be staggered? I'm just also thinking about traffic down the road in the morning and at night.
Oh, um, I think more than likely it will be staggered.
Mm-hmm.
But even if, um, everyone decides to show up at seven AM, the, the driveway is long enough and there's enough parking spaces, so it wouldn't, um, affect any traffic on Red Oak. And, um, traffic, you know, at the, on the property.
Okay. And are you intending to hire staff to help you?
Yes, yes, definitely, um, based on the regulations for the, um, from the city. I'm allowed two star in, in addition to myself, so yes, I have intentions of hiring two people.
And you can accommodate those two cars as well?
Yes, definitely.
Um, and, and do you intend, it looks like the area is pretty wooded from what I can see in the picture. Do you intend to use outside space as well? As part of the daycare or is it all inside?
So, yes, they will need, um, a play area, so I would have to fence, um, a certain portion of the yard with, um, a fence four feet tall to accommodate for outside play.
Okay. All right, thank you. It's all my questions.
Thank you, Scott. Matt?
Uh, no questions for me, thanks.
Sure. Liz?
My only question, excuse me, also goes back to the, the parking area. Uh, do you have any intention of illuminating this? Because as we all know, right now, it's still kinda dark at seven and it soon will be getting very dark at six.
Yes, there are currently floodlights on the property, motion lights. So once you come in through a driveway, the whole back is actually lit up and bright. So once, you know, it becomes dark, there shouldn't be any issues with lighting.
Okay, so that, then that would be for safe access and people can get in and out of cars safely.
Yes.
Um, uh, okay. Oh, uh, how big, do you have, do you have a requirements as to how much outside space you need to have fenced?
Yes, um, the requirement for outdoors, I think it's seventy-five square feet per child. So.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm assuming you plan for twelve kids and then, and work from there?
Fence, yes, we'll fence about nine hundred square feet of the yard.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Liz. And James?
No questions.
All right, um, so thank you again for coming in front of us. So you are licensed by the state, correct?
No, my first step was I had to first get a permit from the town before I could even go to the state to get, yeah.
Okay.
This was the first step.
Okay, got it, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, so thank you. So now you're gonna, uh, so is, is it young kids?
Yes, um, yes, sorry, I didn't say, um, zero to five years old.
So up to five and then, uh, okay. And then you're gonna have after-school care, it sounds like, or no? Or you're not?
No.
The five-year-old only, okay, up to five.
Yeah.
Up to five, they'll stay there all day. It's gonna be you, plus two staff members.
Two others, yes.
Your, your home, um, I don't think we care about the inside, but it looks like you have plenty of space or something probably you're gonna work with the state on.
Yes.
With the interior, it looks like, safety and everything.
Yeah.
You'll have the driveway, there's no additional lights, just the, uh, floodlights. And you're gonna have, I think there's a pool according to the map.
Yes.
But then that's probably as this, uh, licensing, right? Question.
Yes, it's, it's, um, the driveway separates the house and the pool and
Okay, good.
For the state, I'll ha, it's fenced, um, with an automatic lock, but I'll have to actually get it like chain lock and padlock during the hours of operation.
Okay. And thank you, uh, Shannon, in the agenda review, those are, that's, that's our zoning, right? On a home business?
Correct.
Okay. So, all right, so we have, I know the size of the home is fine.
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at one B. Only those residing in the, well, there's no overnight, right?
Hmm, so. So one B, those residing in the dwelling and up to two non-resident employees may engage in the home business.
Yeah, so we're good there.
Yeah.
Outside is not really being changed beside the fenced area, signage, the applicant will come back.
Mm-hmm.
Work with town staff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, five students at a time, okay?
Well, that's if they're doing instruction and then separate for the group daycare, so I added in NG is no more than twelve related or unrelated children.
Okay.
So for the daycare.
All right, it sounds like everything checks off our regulation. Uh, the applicant has to work with the state.
Mm-hmm.
And do the licensing portion, okay?
Yes, and I have to go through the same licensing as a daycare center. Um, anything more than six kids, it's the same stringent rules as a daycare center. Just on a smaller scale.
All right, well, good for you. Um, all right, um, let's see if there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak regarding this application.
Okay, so if anyone has called in to speak, uh, or asked questions regarding the application for the daycare at one thirty Red Oak Hill Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. And one more time, anyone calling in wishing to ask a question or speak regarding one thirty Red Oak Hill Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Madam Chair, there are no hands raised.
All right, uh, commissioners, any last minute questions for the applicant? All right, sounds like there are none. So at this point, uh, the public hearing for the application from Felicia Ennis is closed, and we need a motion and a second, please.
Uh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to approve the application by Felicia En- Ennis, Ennis, sorry, for a special permit for home business daycare at one thirty at Red Oak Hill Road, R thirty zone, as presented.
Liz Sanford, a second?
All right, any discussion, commissioners? Sounds like we got everything across before. Okay, sounds like we're ready to vote. All in favor of this application?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And you opposed? Abstentions? All right, you are approved, uh, thank you, and you'll be
Thank you so much.
Town staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along, uh, the next application is from Steve Joseph. It's an application is for special permit for home business for retail sales and classes related to custom jewelry made on site and sale of men's clothing and accessories located at fifty-five Lovely Street, R twenty, R twelve zone. And who do we have?
Uh, I believe we have Natalie and Steve Joseph on the phone, so
Good.
If you could introduce yourselves, your street address, and then present to the commission what you're, uh, looking to do with your home.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First and foremost, I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you to the commission for giving Trinhashe Biju and Classy Gents the opportunity to present the TPC application. My name is Natalie Marshall Joseph, and this is my business partner, Steve Joseph. We reside at fifty-five Lovely Street, Unionville, Connecticut. We are the small business owners of Trinhashe Biju LLC and Classy Gents LLC. Today, we are here to propose to operate a home business, which will include the sales of men's clothing and retail sales and classes for custom jewelry made on site. Currently, Steve Joseph and myself are the only two employees under these two umbrellas. Our goal is to continue providing unique, durable, and affordable his and her handmade fashion jewelry made locally on the premises by Steve and myself. Both Trinhashe Biju and Classy Gents has been operating an e-commerce business for over a decade. And we are now interested in having a home business where we can showcase our passion with our clients and community. As the homeowners of Trinhashe Biju, we are interested in being granted the opportunity in conducting one and a half hour long beating tutorials primarily on Friday and Saturday evenings from six PM to seven thirty PM twice monthly, accommodating five students at a time at a three-car parking capacity. Classy Gents, on the other hand, is a high-quality men's fashion collection, which carries a wide array of men's casual to formal attire, shoes, and accessories. As we comply with zoning, we will conduct business by appointments only from Monday to Friday from ten AM to four PM, and Saturdays and Sundays from ten thirty AM to four thirty PM. Once a month, meetings will be held with the company's ambassadors to discuss business at hand and an occasional drop, drop-in to pick up merchandise by appointments only. In complying with zoning regulations, we understand that no more than twenty-five percent of our total dwelling units will be used for our home business for retail sales and classes. In non-illuminated sign, no more than two square feet will be placed on the outside in the area approved by the commission. We, the homeowners, at fifty-five Lovely Streets, Unionville, Connecticut, have reviewed and understand the zoning requirements for a home business. We thank you to the commission for considering our application in today's hearing, and thank you to our neighbors for taking time out of their busy schedules to give their continued support. We promise to bring value to this community and provide a once-in-a-lifetime experience. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Well done. Thank you. All right, um, commissioners, um, let's turn it over to you for questions. Patrick, you go first?
Uh, yeah, no questions. I think you pretty much covered it all. And it sounds like you know the regulations, so, so no questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Mike?
You definitely hit on any most of the questions I would have had with your presentation. Thank you for that. Um, any intention of a sign?
I'm sorry.
Any?
I didn't hear your question.
Any intention of putting a sign up?
We do have intentions of putting a small sign up that would be non-illuminated as, as, um, as, um, as we get the permission from the commission, sorry.
And also, if I may add, the first, one, once we have the, the ad, uh, the, the, the sign, we'll take it, we'll send a copy to Michelle and so that she can make sure that contract is in regulation with the town.
Perfect. Um, what's your driveway like? Just out of curiosity. Is it easy to park a couple of cars there?
So the driver is easy to park, um, cars. We do share and we share an easement. Um, so we have, um, we have the capacity to have at least three cars at a time, but seeing that we would be providing business through Classy Gents by appointment only, we shouldn't have such an issue to have more than. But if we are having classes, we have a capacity where we can have about three to five cars on the lot and everyone can turn right on the lot. You don't have to back on, you don't have to back on to the street of lovely. So it's safe, it's pretty safe. And if we do have to have, you know, like sometimes there may be a driver who's not very well in driving, we will give that courtesy to walk down the easement to be able to get them out safely. We really wanna provide a, a great service here.
Have you had any discussion with your neighbors at sixty-five who you shared the easement with?
We have.
They're good with it?
Yes.
So far, yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Guys, thank you very much.
All right, Mike, good questions. How about you, Scott?
Uh, no questions for me. Thanks.
All right, Matt?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Liz?
I'm gonna ask more lighting questions. Uh, do you have lighting in, in, outside the house to eliminate the driveway since you're getting out at, say, seven thirty at night from these classes?
We, we do have lighting. We have, what is that called? Solar lighting? We do have solar lighting, um, along the driveway and outside, yes.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
And James?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, just curious, you know, it sounds like, um, the two businesses seem lovely. Um, have you looked into space in town where you may honestly get more customers, right? You'll have more vis- visibility. Have you looked at, uh, renting in town?
If we have looked at renting out in town?
Yeah.
Is that, no, we have not. We, we haven't looked at renting out in town because we do have the, the space that we needed to open a store at our location at fifty-five. But in the event that business really works out well for us here, because this is only our second year, well, our first and a half year here in the community, so.
I mean, a storefront, I've never seen.
To have a storefront.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, indeed. Yes, yes, that's the idea. Uh, we try to see.
As time goes.
How, you know, we, we build the niche, uh, the clientele reputation, wants people to know the community that we offer boutique. Uh, a lifetime experience. It's not only the sale of the product, it's also establishing a connection with the community. Once we know we have that community to support of our community, yes, indeed, that's a plan to put a front, a front store. But first, we cannot, it's like you say, it's not, it's a sure bet, we're gonna be doing, uh, the same thing, boutique for the community, uh, handmade service to, to serve, to serve the community. However, we don't wanna jump on our emotion to get into that, put a storefront, then it's not the, you know, the community, not everybody responds into the code that we offer. We offer codes for everybody, but for there, we have to understand our new niche, which is Unionville and Farmington.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Because I was thinking about, you know, your location. I think be, you know, if we approve this application, I think this is the only business on Lovely between that and Roaring Brook. You know, so it is a community, right?
Yes, indeed.
And so, um, it is a little out of character. I, I understand it's by appointment only. The hours are super limited. Um, I, you know, the one thing, although, you know, the hours are limited, the, um, it's not a great area, you know, you live there, so you know too, I used to live on Lovely Street. It's not a great point for pulling in and out of Lovely.
Okay.
Um. So, but what you're talking about is one and a half hour classes, Fridays, Saturdays, twice a month, right?
Yes.
And then the men's portion, the store, the clothing would be by appointment only.
Correct.
And you would limit it to, like, a client at a time or, refresh my memory?
Yes, it, one client at a time.
Yes, when it's pro-point only, they have call. There's many even would have refer from Texas company. I'm just saying example.
Yeah.
They refer my company of, from a Briscoe, and then I got a phone call and I'm like, uh, did you call? And they have to, they say, no, I just got a number. I'm like, with all due respect, you have to make an appointment for tomorrow or the next day. I have to make sure the facility that, you know, so it complies. It's not just open on the store. Once again, it's making sure that if I do business here, there's no problem with where I live and then.
I, I understand. Um, now this, um, I was just thinking about, uh, the process, Shannon. Well, Shannon, did we hear from any? This was in mailing, right?
Uh, yes, so they did, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Joseph did all the, uh, required notifications, all the mailings. We went through it personally. And, uh, the sign's been posted and we have not to date received any, uh, written correspondence.
Okay. And, um, in terms of, you know, let's say we approve this application, does this stay with this property or how does, or with the, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Joseph, like, can we put a timeframe? I don't know.
Uh, so with, uh, the home business, it does indicate that the, um, in our regulations as part of the special permit, the commission may attach a condition to an approval regulating the business hours and days, the time period, et cetera. The commission may also limit the grant of the approval to this particular applicant. So, which is a little different than some of our others.
Yeah.
So, yes, it doesn't necessarily have to run with the land, which is a little different.
Yeah, I, I think in this case it makes sense and it sounds like, you know, uh, with the business takes off, which I know is doing very well online, right? It's been in existence for ten years. Hopefully, we'll see them in a little store in town, you know, where, where there's more visibility, more customers. I think it makes sense to uh, make it specific to the current applicant owner. That's, that's my, my suggestion.
For you and the commission to.
Okay.
To come to an agreement on it.
All right, I don't have any other questions, so let's see if there's anyone that has called in.
Thank you.
So, if anyone from the public has called in, please raise your hand so you may address the commission, um. Saying, Tim Labouthe, uh, Tim, if you could, uh, just give your name and address for the commission and, uh, you can unmute your microphone. At this point, we should be, yep, go right ahead.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Um, thank you. My name is Tim Labouthe. I live at forty-four Progress Avenue in Unionville. It is off of Lovely Street, right around the corner. Um, and I just wanted to call in, uh, and offer my, um, wholehearted, uh, support for this business. Um. My family and I had an opportunity to meet Steve and Natalie when they came to town and, uh, they are wonderful Unionvilleites and have been. Um, their products are amazing. Uh, in fact, um, Natalie and Steve came and, uh, came and helped us at the Unionville Museum at our first holiday bazaar and brought their beautiful jewelry and people loved it and, uh, they were very generous to us. Um, they are a classy, uh, business, um, and they, um, they're just, uh, they're, we're just, we're just lucky to have them in Unionville. Um, I've also had the opportunity to, um, be a guest at their house, um, and I know you know the property, but um, it's beautifully maintained. They've done an amazing job in their front. Um, the driveway is very clear. Um, it's nicely located on the property, so it's, uh, pretty visible. We've had some new signage, uh, on Lovely Street, uh, and, um, it's, uh, it's, it's complements that. So I would say that the driveway is nice and long, there's plenty of parking, uh, and, um, I, I just, um, very, very happy for them that they have this opportunity and I wish them all the success. Uh, and, um, Steve is gonna make me a classy-looking guy. Uh, it's gonna take a lot of work, uh, but he's promised me, I, I think he's the guy to do it and um, as I said, Natalie's jewelry, their jewelry is beautiful, um, all my family has it. So, um, I wish them the best of luck and I encourage you to support them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. If, uh, if anyone else has called in with, to make a comment regarding this application, please raise your hand. Uh, we have Joshua Rodman. Please, uh, state your name and address for the record, please. Joshua, you can go ahead. Joshua, we can't hear you. We can see, I can see your hands raised. We are not getting any audio for you, Joshua.
So. Okay, can you hear me now?
There you go. Yes, perfect.
Sorry about that. I'm not very familiar with Zoom. Uh, so this is Joshua Rodman. I reside at forty Lovely. Across from Steve and Natalie, and, uh, I just wanted to raise my hand. And, um, I got nothing but better things to say. I completely agree with what Tim um, had said about them. They've been great residents to the neighborhood. Uh, they've done a great job with the property. Uh, I know it sounded like there was a concern with, um, access and just visibility. Um, it, it, it is really open, uh, especially during daytime. Even at nighttime, it's pretty well lit up. Uh, well-kept property. Um, as Tim said, they've been great residents, um, awesome neighbors, uh, very pleasant to have. And I just wanted to, uh, raise my hand in support.
Thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Josh, love you both.
If, uh, if anyone else has called in regarding this application for fifty-five Lovely Street, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. All right, one more time, if anyone else has called in regarding fifty-five Lovely, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised.
All right, commissioners, before I close that public hearing, do you have any questions for the applicants? Okay, at this point, the, uh, meeting is closed on the application for the businesses at fifty-five Lovely Street, and we need a motion and a second, please, before discussion.
Okay, yeah, all right. Uh, before discussion, okay, so Patrick Carrier, um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Steve Joseph for special permit for home business for retail sales and classes related to custom jewelry made on site and sale of men's clothing and accessories located at fifty-five Lovely Street in an R twenties, R twenty, R twelve zone.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All right, and discussion? Um, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the only discussion is the, I tend to agree with you that, you know, to have it follow the, the property, right? Or not the property, follow the, the applicant. So the special permit would follow the applicant.
Yeah.
I, I do tend to think that that's a, a, a good idea.
Okay. The, thank you. Then the hours are limited, right? By appointment, so contained. Uh, we're not expecting tons of traffic.
No.
Uh, it's nice to hear from neighbors, direct neighbors that are, you know, everyone is in agreement or that, that tool that called in. Um, thank you, Patrick. I don't even know why I'm commenting after each one. But anyway, Mike, do you have anything else to add or would you like to discuss?
Nothing to add. Looks good to me.
Okay, Scott?
I'm good as well, thanks.
All right, Matt?
I, I'm gonna agree with the condition. Thank you.
Sure. Liz?
Uh, I'm good. I, I agreed with the condition also. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
All right. So, do we modify it then, I guess?
Correct. All right. So, um, it, it can just be a modification to the motion, that's fine. You don't have to restate the entire motion.
Right, so just so amend, uh, how do you, how would you say that?
Just say, add. Both agree. Carrier and Sanford. Just say to amend the, to amend the motion to add the condition that you'd like to, to add, and then Liz would need to agree to it since she's the one that seconded the motion to begin with.
Yep. All right, Patrick here, I'd like to amend the emotion to, the motion to include the condition that the special permit followed the applicant.
Yeah.
And Liz Sanford, I agree with the additional motion.
All right, thank you. Oh, geez, okay, good. And I, you know, I, I stopped the flow before and I think you were going on the right path, but thank you for doing that. Um, all right, so I guess it's time for a vote. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we're good. Application has been approved. And, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Joseph, you'll be in touch with.
Oh, I can't wait to see you tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm sure I'll see both of you.
Thank you, guys. Guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, thank you very much. The entire TPC, guys, thank you very, very much.
You got it. Good luck.
Also, the commissioners, I'm, oh, now, since we officially, guys, I'm not being sexist, guys, welcome. Okay, just make sure you guys call then, even you guys are commissioners.
Appointment only, that's right.
Yes, make sure you guys call then first. Call them first. We look forward to so much, you guys. Please come in. Love you, guys. Michelle, thank you. I love you, guys.
Welcome. We've got other, other matters to take care of this evening, so thank you. We'll see you tomorrow.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, bye-bye.
Yeah, bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye, no.
All right. And the final public hearing item in front of us this evening is an application from AD South Road LLC and Sacred Development LLC. It's an application for an amendment to the zoning regulations to add South Road Opportunity Zone, change of zone from B one, R forty to S R O Z, and a site plan approval for multi-family residential community proposed pursuant to CGS eight dash thirty G for properties located at sixty-two South Road, lots eight eight six four and eight 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 zero South Road. All right, and who do we have?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Uh, can you hear, everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
We sure can.
All right, all right. Good evening.
I, I apologize, Madam Chair. I apologize. Uh, this is Andrea Gomes, counsel for the applicant. I, I don't mean to steal attorney Hoeb's uh, uh, thunder, but we do have one additional panelist, and this is for, through you, Madam Chair, and Ms. Rutherford, one additional panelist to add, and that's Mark Vertucci. He is on, he has been promoted to panelist.
I tried a couple of times and Mr. Vertucci's not paying attention to me. So I tried. He needs. There he goes.
Oh, geez, okay.
Now he's paying attention. We're all set.
Thank you. I apologize for the interruption. Go ahead.
No, 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 no. No, that's okay. I actually probably should also say that, uh, this application, um, has been presented to Inland Wetland. And, uh, that, that application is still with inland and wetland, so today we're gonna get the presentation, have the opportunity to ask questions. Public may ask questions, but we're not voting on this matter this evening.
Correct, and it'll be continued. The applicant's aware, all, all parties are aware.
Well, at least I got that out.
You did.
All right.
All righty. Mr. Hoab.
Okay, I'm back. All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Christian Hoeb and my office is located at three fourteen Main Street here in Farmington. I'm gonna introduce our team. First, the applicant, AD South Road LLC and Sager Development, consists, uh, primarily of two members, Jeffrey Sager and his daughter Phoebe Sager. Presenting this evening will be attorney Timothy Hollister and attorney Andrea Gomes from Hinckley Allen. Jeffrey Board will be here from Bowler Engineering, Mark Vertucci from Fussin' O'Neill, Better Late Than Never, and architect Laura Crosskey of Crosskey Architects LLC. So, this applicant and the team have been developing and refining these plans and this presentation since last year. Much of the process involved town staff through numerous correspondences, meetings, and, uh, an incalculable number of responses. Uh, you probably will remember the applicant was before you in July of this year for an informal review wherein the more salient elements of this application were presented. Prior to this hearing, Jeff and Phoebe Sager organized a neighborhood outreach and, and there, it was scheduled two evenings, October eleventh and thirteenth, I was present for both. The first evening on the eleventh, three residents participated wherein Jeff and Phoebe explained the overall application, they had some exhibits, and the neighbors were free to communicate, ask questions, raise concerns. In the first meeting, uh, the neighbors expressed concerns about density, that was an exact quote, the number of parking spaces and traffic. Uh, and, and it, later in the presentation, Jeff Sager will address all these concerns, and he did at that meeting. The second meeting on the thirteenth, it was a rainy day like today, and we waited a half hour and nobody else attended, and so we rolled up our packages and our exhibits and headed home. So, for this evening, the initial presentation will cover all aspects of the three-part application before you. You'll hear from Jeff Sager, attorneys Timothy Hollister and Andrea Gomes, and the initial testimony of experts, all of whom are available to answer any questions from the commission or anyone from the public as well. And as you pointed out, the hearing we think will be continued or it'll kept, be kept open, so there'll be more opportunity. Always challenging, it's always challenging, as you can recognize to be last on the agenda. Fortunately, this is, wasn't one of the, the longest ones I've ever heard, but we, we appreciate that we're last and you've already worked diligently, and so, we wanna make, ensure that you have all the evidence before you and all the testimony required, but I can assure you, my client is super organized, you've probably observed them in the past, and much of what they're presenting is streamlined and efficient, so I, hopefully that will be helpful to you. The goal is to take less than an hour to present our information and our evidence, and then turn it back to the Commissioners and the public for comments and questions. Before we begin, begin with a more substantive presentation, I do think it is relevant to consider the expertise of the applicant as it relates to this part of town, and also how this part of the town has changed, which is something I personally observe because I think I served on this commission about twenty-five years ago. Um, in its capacity as part of the team at Metro Realty, this applicant has been working in this neighborhood for over twenty-five years. Jeff Sager, who is, you, as you know, is a senior member of this development team, lives just outside the Health Center neighborhood, and his office is located in For- Farmington Corporate Park. Now, a lot has changed in this neighborhood in the last twenty-five years. I remember what it looked like with the single lanes and the kind of X-ing intersection, which was really dangerous. But the main driver over there, one of the major drivers over the last twenty-five years has been the Health Center. And the Health Center has expanded beyond its traditional boundaries, and let me just give you a few examples. It established the cell in Genome Science Building at four hundred Farmington Avenue, which is also the home to the Yukon Technology Incubator Program. It acquired sixteen months in road, a building that for twenty years was the Hughline World Headquarters. It acquired one ninety-five Farmington Avenue across from Talke Notch, and Yukon Health recently rented the building, leased the building, being constructed at five months in road, which will be the new home of the Yukon Brain and Spinal Institute, so things have changed considerably uh, in their uh, approach, their size, their deliberations. Yukon Health has also expanded significantly on its campus. Uh, there's a new two hundred and twenty, twenty-four bed acute care hospital. There's a large outpatient pavilion and structured parking, Jackson Laboratories, and Yukon Health has also drastically expanded their patient services and the technology with which to deliver those services. The second big change in this neighborhood has been the roadway system. A critical component of all development in this area is due to the improvement of Farmington Avenue at exit thirty-nine, including South Road and Bird's Eye Road. Prior to the year two thousand, the roadways surrounding the medical center were notoriously insufficient and extremely unsafe. After initial studies were completed, an affiliate of this applicant, which was Metro, undertook and paid for the design of these road, roads, which as you can imagine was a considerable expense. Metro also conveyed a portion of land that is now where part of South Road is located. The doc, the design and a land transfer sounds really easy when it just comes out as a sentence, but it wasn't. It was the opposite, in addition to the town of Farmington, our boards and commissions, was the state of Connecticut, and many other entities among them, including DOT, DEEP, MDC, and EverSource. And it all, all it takes is to look at a map of the area to see all the rights of ways, easements, and if you look back historically, all the land transaction that were puzzled together uh, to complete this task, it was a, really a considerable task and a wonderful goal. The result is that all of us now enjoy a much safer roadways that operate as well and better than any other major roadways in town. Finally, there's been, a- and you know this, because m- m- many of these applications have gone through the commission over the years, but there's been significant private investment in this neighborhood that includes the medical campus at ex- exit thirty-nine and at Farmington Avenue and South Road, the Homewood Suites Hotel, the multifamily development at Omira Farm, Omira Ridge in Yorkshire. So I'd ask you to consider this app- application tonight in the time, context of all the change that has occurred in this neighborhood in the past twenty-five years. I personally think these changes have been terrific for the town, I think they've been exceptional. Our medical office campus is the envy of the whole Art Hartford area. I can assure you, West Hartford and Glastonbury would love to have what we have in our community. These are clean uses, they provide a wealth of job opportunities, and they provide to Farmington residents the best medical care available in central Connecticut in a very convenient setting. As a bonus, they pay substantial real estate taxes, or in the case of Yukon, substantial payments in lieu of taxes. So, and when you consider all that's been established here, both in terms of the physical infrastructure and all the opportunities that has been created here, I believe you will find merit in establishing a new affordable housing community in this location after the completion of our testimony and our presentation. In several moments, I'm gonna turn the floor over to attorneys Andrea Gomes and Tim Hollister, who will discuss the finer points of the application before you, including Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash thirty G. Jeff Sager will then provide you with a more detailed discussion of the background of this neighborhood. He'll also review the suitability of the site, the team's community outreach, affordability proposal detail, and other important features of this application. Before I pass the mic, or, well, I'm not sure if it's mic or the camera, I wanna thank staff again for their countless hours of participation and, and truly honest feedback, from there, we bring forward a much refined application. Uh, and we appreciate the candor and the input. In advance, I wanna thank this commission for listening to our presentation this evening. Jeff and Phoebe and the entire team have given their best efforts to bring you a, what I consider a remarkable proposal, and we humbly seek your approval of the various motions for approval. So, I'm gonna say goodbye for now, I'm gonna be here at the hearing, of course, I'm gonna turn it over to Andrea, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, good evening, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners, uh, for the record, again, my name is Andrea Gomes, I'm an attorney at Hinckley Allen, here on behalf of the applicant. My colleague, Tim Hollister, also counsel for the applicant, is on as well. Uh, Madam Chair, before I get into the substance of our presentation, I do have just a few procedural housekeeping matters to address for the record, if I may. Uh, first notices, newspaper notices were appropriately published in the Hartford Current in advance of the public hearing, a big thank you to uh, Ms. Rutherford and her team for getting that done. In addition, the required mailing to a butters and the posting of the sign was completed by the applicants and proof was submitted to town staff of both of those. Uh, the regulation and rezoning was also filed with the town clerk at least ten days in advance of tonight's public hearing as required by state law. And it, although not required, uh, town staff did submit a copy of the proposed text amendment, whi- which I'll discuss in more detail in just a moment, to uh, CROG, the Capital Region Council of Governments for review and comment. On October fourteenth, CROG issued a letter expressing no concerns, and in fact, they expressed support for the proposal before the commission right now, noting that the proposal furthers CROG's own policy of increasing housing choice for all people. Uh, backing up just a moment, as the commission knows, our original application materials were submitted on September nineteenth. Since that time, we have been working with town staff to incorporate revisions to the text amendment and to the plans, and in particular, we are in the process of addressing the seventy-five plus comments that we received from town staff on the proposed plans uh, on October fourteenth. The uh, responses to those comments and the accompanying revisions to the plans will improve this proposal, and we thank uh, town staff for their diligence and their uh, eye for detail, uh, because overall, it will certainly be a benefit to, to the proposal and the development once constructed. Uh, the applicant intends to, as you noted at the outset, Madam Chair, uh, we, we will not close the hearing tonight as the uh, Wetlands application public hearing is, is currently pending and the applicant is still in the process of responding to those staff comments. So our intent for tonight is to hear and gather the commission's comments and questions, as well as those posed by members of the public, and to respond to those and the outstanding staff comments in advance of the uh, continued public hearing. Lastly, uh, I will note, as, as the commission can see, we did submit uh, our PowerPoint presentation, some slides to Ms. Rutherford in advance of tonight's public hearing. Uh, we have done our best to put together a comprehensive, detailed presentation for the commission on this proposal, so we'd respectfully request, just to keep things moving as they've been so beautifully moving all night long, uh, to streamline the process, we'd request that the commission hold its questions until the end, as uh, we, we hope to address uh, questions, all those questions throughout the presentation. With that, I will ask Shannon, can you go to slide two, please? Thank you, uh, so the subject property consists of three parcels, the commission can see that orange box toward the bottom of the screen, and they are sixty-two, eight-eight-six-four, and eight-eight-eight-zero South Road. The site is located on the southerly side of South Road, directly north of Interstate eighty-four. Combined, the three parcels uh, total about two point nine acres and are located in the R forty and B one zones. Uh, I will note just uh, as a point of clarification, the commission has seen and we'll see up on the screen right here, reference to eighty South Road. Again, that's not the address of the parcels, that's just ultimately what uh, both the applicants and town staff have been referring to this proposal as eighty South Road, as the community does not yet have a building, so uh, the, the address, as I mentioned, is sixty-two, eight-eight-six-four, and eight-eight-eight-zero South Road, but eighty South Road, just for ease of reference. The site is also located in the Yukon Health Center area as defined in the twenty-eighteen addendum to the Plan of Conservation and Development. Uh, the commission uh, well knows that Yukon Health Center, Jackson Laboratory, and Farmington Medical Arts are located to the north and west of the site. Uh, but residential uses are also nearby, so we have Meadows condominium, condominiums and Village at Yorkshire Senior Living, together with senior uh, single-family homes uh, near the site. The East Farmington Fire Station directly abuts the site to the east. Next slide, please, Shannon? Thank you, so the applicants are proposing the construction on this site of a multifamily residential community consisting of sixty-five rental apartment homes in two separate buildings. This includes six studio apartments, twenty-one bedroom apartments, and thirty-nine two-bedroom apartments, ranging from uh, five hundred and thirteen square feet for the smallest studio up to one thousand two hundred and eighty-two square feet for the largest two-bedroom. There are a number of resident amenities proposed for this plan, including an indoor community room with a study slash computer area, an outdoor community patio, an office space, an onsite laundry uh, room and package rooms, as well as a communal roof deck on building A, which is the building further to the west, furthest to the west, to the left of the page. We have submitted this application as a three-part application consisting of a zoning regulation amendment to include a new zone in the Farmington zoning regulations known as the South Road Opportunity Zone, or the S R O Z, a rezoning of this site to the S R O Z, and site plan approval. The plan uh, will require two additional approvals, as uh, Madam Chair, you referenced at the beginning of the meeting or the hearing, excuse me, uh, this application will require Wetlands approval. We did submit a uh, an application for a regulated activities permit to the Farmington Conservation and Inland Wetland um, Commission, but the hearing, and the hearing opened, but was continued to November second, again, to allow the applicant an opportunity to respond to those town staff comments I mentioned a few moments ago. And because uh, South Road is a state road, the Department of Transportation for the state of Connecticut will be reviewing this application in conjunction with an encroachment permit. Now, importantly, this application has been filed uh, pursuant to General Statutes eight thirty G, Connecticut's Affordable Housing Land Use Appeals Act, and it's been filed as an application for assisted housing, meaning that it will be financed uh, at least in part by a governmental program. Uh, here, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, or LITEC program, as it's referred to. Jeff Sager will speak to the commission in just a moment and provide the commission a brief overview and a few more details about the financing for the community. Eight thirty G provides that if a proposed residential community will be built and administered with governmental financial assistance, and the applicant agrees to follow that financing program's rules regarding preserving homes for low or moderate income housing, then the development qualifies as assisted housing, and a zoning commission can only deny the application if it receives evidence at the public hearing that there is a substantial public health and safety concern that outweighs the need for affordable housing in the town and region, and which substantial public health or safety concern cannot be addressed by a reasonable change to the plan. As I mentioned, part of this three-part application is the proposal to add the S R O Z, the South Road Opportunity Zone, to the uh, Farmington zoning regulations. A copy of the language we originally proposed for the S R O Z is at the commission's September nineteenth package at tab four, but since that time, we've revised the language, working with town staff, uh, and the commission, I believe, should have a copy of that revised language as well. Uh, just so the commission understands the process of how we get to this proposed regulation. Uh, quite simply, we start with the Farmington zoning regulations, so the format and content of the S R O Z was modeled on the existing regulations, including in particular, the Affordable Housing Zone and the Housing Opportunity District, we started there. And uh, the regulations intended to define with precision what can and cannot be built in the S R O Z. So it allows our proposed use, multifamily residential, compliant with eight thirty G, and it allows it by a site plan, not by a special permit, because special permits are discretionary by nature, legally discretionary, and that's just not compliant with the eight thirty G standard. We have included uh, provisions in the proposed S R O Z text on the applicability of the zone, meaning what land can and cannot be rezoned to the S R O Z. So here, we've required that land be between two to five acres, that it be located within the Yukon Health Center area, and that it also abut an interstate highway for a minimum of seven hundred feet, so we've crafted that narrowly, again, in conjunction with town staff's input. We've also included uh, several zone-specific dimensional requirements that apply to our site, uh, including maximum density, here for the S R O Z, we've calculated that twenty-five units per net acre and maximum height, uh, forty feet for the S R O Z. Where possible, we copied or simply made reference to the Farmington zoning regulations as they're currently written. So for example, signage, lighting, and soil erosion and sediment control all refer to the existing standards and the regulations. For landscaping, we have pulled a, a number of standards verbatim from the existing landscaping regulations in Article four, section thirteen. We've also, of course, uh, because this is an eight thirty G, included minimum standards for the affordability of an S R O Z development, including the requirement that the applicant submit an affordability plan in compliance with state law, which sets forth the rules for administering uh, an S R O Z development. And the commission does have a copy of our affordability plan, our submission draft, in the September nineteenth. in the September 19th application package. So a site-specific regulation is required here, because this particular development required a combination of use and dimensional rules and affordability requirements that just wasn't available in the current Farmington zoning regulations. Courts do not consider this spot zoning, and in fact, a, and it is legally permissible for an 830-G application to not comply with existing zoning regulations. So put differently, not complying with the underlying zoning regulations for a site is not a valid basis for denial of an 830-G. We go back to that standard I just mentioned a few moments ago, regarding substantial public health and safety. I'll also note, and I think it's important for the commission to know, that this three-part application process has been used successfully in over 60 towns over the last 30 years of 830-G. Many of those applications, not to toot his horn, but many of those applications were done by my colleague, Attorney Tim Hollister, who's also on the line. Also with our September 19th application materials, we submitted to the commission a separately-bound package, what we coin our Affordable Housing Needs Memorandum, providing the commission with some additional information and support regarding the need for affordable housing in Farmington and in the greater region as well. As we explained in that memo, 49% of renters in Connecticut are currently considered to be cost burdened, which means that they spend more than 30% of their income on housing. In the greater Hartford area, for this purpose, as we'll call that, that includes Farmington, a worker who earns minimum wage has to work 1.8 full-time jobs, just to afford a standard two-bedroom apartment. And in fact, the 2018 addendum to the POCD that I just mentioned a few moments ago recognizes the need for affordable housing in Farmington, particularly in the Yukon Health Center area. And this development plan certainly would help the commission meet that goal of providing that housing. More recently, this development plan also appears to be precisely what Farmington envisioned in its July 2021 Affordable Housing Plan. On the Department of Housing's Affordable Housing Appeals List for 2021, also known as the 10% List, Farmington, 7.82% of Farmington's housing is considered affordable. That's 868 units out of over 11,100 units. While this percentage means that Farmington is ahead of about 75% of other municipalities within the state of Connecticut, it's still factually and legally in need of more lower-coast cost housing. Now, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, Madam Chair, before I hand it over to Mr. Sager, that the Connecticut General Assembly recognized this need to move this, the housing opportunity and housing equity dial forward in the right direction in 2021 by enacting Public Act 2129. Shannon, would you just go to the next slide, please? Thank you. Now, with Public Act 2129, the General Assembly amended our Zoning Enabling Act, Connecticut General Statutes 8-2. And while the act did a number of things, I just put a couple up here for the commission's reference. It amended 8-2 to require that zoning regulations provide for the development of housing opportunities, including multifamily dwellings, promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for both low and moderate income households, and address significant disparities in housing needs and access to educational, occupational, and other opportunities. So certainly, the legislature at the state level has recognized the need and is moving things in the right direction. With that, Madam Chair, I will hand it over to Mr. Sager.
Thank you.
Shannon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So, Madam Chair, members of the Farmington Planning and Zoning Commission, the development entity, Sager Development, is comprised of Phoebe Sager, who's an architect with development experience in the field of mixed-income housing, and me. My name is Jeff Sager, I reside at 15 White Oak Road. Shannon, I am not going to get it right when I ask you to show the right slide, so if you could help me out with that.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll figure it out, if I can impose upon you.
I will do my best. I didn't memorize them, so we'll see how it goes.
Nor did I. So by way of background, it's been my privilege over the last 25 years to be part of a team, right, that worked extensively, as Chris mentioned, with governing bodies, state officials, regulatory authorities, to improve the roadways and the infrastructure in the Health Center neighborhood. Specifically, that was around Exit 39, widening Farmington Avenue, making a T-intersection with South Road, and making a T-intersection with Birdseye Road. I've also, it's also been my privilege to be part of a team that developed, and we continue to own and operate, a medical campus and a daycare center in close proximity to this site. And it has further been my privilege that we have developed in Farmington four affordable housing developments over the last 25 years. And they are namely Heritage Glen, that was in 1994. So that is located on Route 6, just west of Fineman Road. Interestingly, in the year that it was placed in service, the National Association of Home Builders recognized it as the best multifamily affordable development in the nation for complexes under 100 units. So that was, that was something we're quite proud of. West Woods was placed in service in 1996, that's located on Route 6, just west of Route 177. The Village at Hunter's Ridge, that was placed in service in 1999, that's off Railroad Avenue in Unionville. And then the Village at Yorkshire, 2007, at the intersection of Munson and Middle Roads, outside the back of the Yukon Health Center. Tonight, we're proposing a mixed-income housing proposal, there's no official name yet, we refer to it as 80 South Road. The site is on the south side of South Road, between Middle and Munson. South Road, of course, you know, is a state road, it's the Route 9 bypass, so for cars leaving the town center and looking to travel south on Route 9. Many people also use South Road to enter and exit the back of the medical center, and to get to and from West Farms Mall. As Andrea mentioned, the property is 2.93 acres, 1.41 are Zoned B1, and 1.52 are Zoned R40. So it's a long, linear site. It combines three parcels, as Andrea said. You have formerly a Barberino-owned parcel that was approved for a small medical office in 2010, a former DOT-owned parcel that was approved for a restaurant in 2018, and then there was a blighted single-family home, all the way to the west, demolished in the late winter, early spring 2022. So we're bounded by South Road to the north, East Farms' firehouse to the east, the I-84 connector at Exit 39 to the south. There's a vacant, single-family home parcel adjacent to the west, and then the next lot further to the west is a single-family residence, which I believe is a rental property. So we believe this site to be an ideal site for mixed-income housing, and that is what we submit for your consideration this evening. And my reasons for saying that are, first and foremost, is transportation. So there's a fast-track bus stop within a quarter-mile to the east. It's right outside of 5 Munson Road, where the new medical office building is being constructed, or 16 Munson Road, the building that Yukon bought from Ublind. And then there's a second bus line, if you go to the west, at the entrance of the South Road Medical Campus. So you have two different bus lines, both under half a mile and clearly walkable. Secondly, I'd point out is the employment. So as you probably know, Farmington is the only town in Connecticut where more people work here than live here. So in Farmington, we're a well-established employment center, and the Health Center neighborhood has the most employment in Farmington. But we're also adjacent to East Farms and Batterson, which is also a major employment area. Next, I would mention medical services. We believe the convenient, and I emphasize convenient, access to medical services, and just to name a few, whether it's acute care, ambulatory care, a broad range of specialists, we have pediatric and adult surgery centers, imaging, men's health, women's health, blood tests. We think it's better here than in any place in central Connecticut. We consider the Health Center neighborhood the best location for medical services in central Connecticut, and should this proposal become a reality, as I mentioned last time we visited this topic, I would welcome the opportunity to provide homes for persons with serious or specialized medical needs, who'd benefit from the proximity to the medical center and the extensive surrounding medical services that we offer here. Many individuals and families find themselves with low incomes specifically because of medical disabilities, or acute or chronic conditions. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our incredible schools. So East Farms and Irving Robbins are within walking distance, and if we're fortunate enough to be approved, by the time this proposal is complete, the new high school will be complete. We have miles of contiguous sidewalks in the Health Center neighborhood, and as a part of this development proposal, we've designed a sidewalk across the front of the site that would provide the missing link to the sidewalk system in this area, and also a flashing beacon to slow down traffic for pedestrians. I wish the grocery stores were a little closer, but the closest grocery store is Stop &amp; Shop in West Hartford, it's about 2.7 miles. Aldi in New Britton's about 2 and 1/2, and Trader Joe's at Corbin's Corner is 2.4 miles. Chris mentioned the outreach, but just to mention it again, the two nights for October 11th and October 13th, and we reached out in that outreach to everybody within 200 feet of the development, plus all of the owners in the Farmington Meadow condominium, most of whom are well beyond 200 feet. Want to talk about the affordability, and Andrea touched on this, but, so the development proposal, six studio units, 21-bedroom units, 39 two-bedroom units, will remain affordable for at least 40 years. So for this community to qualify toward the town's goal of 10% affordability, at least 15% of the homes must be affordable at 80% of area median income. I'm going to use that phrase a lot, so if I may, I'll just call it AMI. And 15% of the units must be affordable at 16%, excuse me, 60% of AMI. So this is the minimum affordability that we will achieve. All the homes in this development, even the market rate homes, so all the homes, qualify toward the town's 10%. And the reason for that is that they're going to be, they're proposed to be financed with CHFA, I'm sorry, the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority and the State of Connecticut Department of Housing. Our goal is to achieve greater affordability, it's to achieve 80% affordability and 20% market rate. Substantially greater affordability than the minimum that I just described, and to do that, will require a subsidy from the different state agencies. Some of it's state, some of it's federal, but it's all allocated by the state agencies. So our aspiration with this development, and we'll be filing an application in January consistent with that, is that 20% of the units are going to be affordable at 30% of area AMI, 40% of the units at 50% AMI, 20% of the units at 80% AMI, and 20% at market rate. So what does that mean? So here are the maximum incomes and gross rent for those cohorts that I just mentioned. So the AMI of 30% for a family of one has a maximum income of $23,670. A family of four, it's $33,810. At 50% of area median income, for a family of one, the maximum income is $39,450, and for a family of four is $56,350. And 80% AMI, for a family of one, the maximum income is $63,120. For a family of four, it's $90,160. Those numbers are indexed every year, it comes out in April, it went up 8% last year because of inflation, but those numbers move up every year. The rent that the tenant pays is, maximum rent is prescribed, so the rent that we charge cannot exceed these limits. So for a one-bedroom at 30% of area median income, and let me pause for a second, on the last two columns on the right, you'll see util and perens, those are utility allowances, and the rent that a tenant pays is the gross rent that I'm about to review, less the utility allowance. So for the one-bedroom, at 30% of area median income, the net tenant rent is gross 634, less 117. At 50% of area median income, the one-bedroom is $1,056, less 117. At 80% of area median income, the gross rent for a one-bedroom is $1,691, less 117. So the less the utility allowance is the net rent. Two-bedroom, 30%, 761, 50%, 1268, 80%, 2020 in each instance, less the 151 utility allowance for the two-bedroom. And what the utility allowance is, is that is the estimate that is prescribed by the Farmington Housing Authority or other sources for what a tenant can expect to pay to the utility companies for, we pay for the hot water, but for heat, lights and plugs, and air conditioning. So even if this proposal earns its land use approvals from Farmington, there's a very steep challenge to piece together the financing for this proposal. And to construct this development, as I mentioned earlier, we need substantial subsidy, some of it's federal, some of it's state. We'll have to compete for those resources. We submit our application in January 2023, so coming up, you can only apply once a year, and we'll know the outcome of that application by June 2023, so whether or not we've been successful in obtaining our financing. What it would require, and what we're applying for, is low-income housing tax credits from the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, I'll refer to them as CHFA, and a low-interest-rate loan from the State of Connecticut Department of Housing, I will refer to that agency as DOH. The process for applying for this funding is very intensive, extremely competitive, and if we're not successful, we will be back in future years. Want to talk for a minute about the unit count. We've described the challenges and financing this proposal, but we'd also like to explain the number of units we're proposing, because it's been very carefully considered, and it is a function of the financing we're applying for, because you need a development with a critical mass, it's sufficient to absorb the very large fixed costs that these developments require, whether it's the development itself, the financing, or the ongoing management. But you can't have so many units as to overtax the subsidy, because there's very limited subsidies available, as I mentioned, and how competitive they are. Another goal of ours with this proposal, and I had mentioned this when I saw you last on this topic, is to set aside 15 affordable homes for use by FAVR. 12 of these 15 homes are proposed to be one-bedroom, and three are proposed to be two-bedroom. 12 of these 15 homes are proposed to be one-bedroom, and three are proposed to be two-bedroom. FAVAR is a nonprofit headquartered in Canton, and they serve the Farmington Valley residents with developmental disabilities. I've known FAVAR for quite a while. For the past 10 years, FAVAR residents have occupied a similar number of units and an affordable rental community in Avon known as Old Farms Crossing. And that's a metro-owned affordable housing community. The FAVAR residents are busy during the day, and they have small buses and minivans that assist them with their transportation needs. Some FAVAR residents work at the Health Center, and overall, the proximity to the medical services in this neighborhood is very important to them. The FAVAR organization provides onsite, around-the-clock support. It's between one and three persons, depending on the time of day, and they don't live in the units, but they rather work from an office in the building onsite. We've met with Nancy Parent of the Farmington Housing Authority to introduce this proposal. My understanding is that the next board meeting, a letter of the Housing Authority, a letter of support drafted by Ms. Parent will be introduced for approval by the Housing Authority. At Metro Realty, we've worked extensively with the Housing Authority through the years to house families from the waitlist in our mixed-income rental, our mixed-income communities. Ms. Parent and the Housing Authority is probably the best resource in town if there's any doubt as to the need for affordable housing. And this, of course, was captured in your affordable housing plan. But I did want to share with you, if I may, some data from the waiting lists we keep at Metro for our Farmington affordable housing communities. Now, some of these names may be years old, some may be repeated on multiple waiting lists, but it will provide you with a sense of the need that we see in our professional capacity every day. So the totals are as follows. For a one-bedroom unit that rents at 60% of AMI, we have 168 persons on the list, 42 at Heritage Glen, 25 at Hunter's Ridge, 101 at Yorkshire. For a one-bedroom rental at 50% of area median income, we have 84 persons on the list, 42 at Hunter's Ridge, 42 at Yorkshire. For a one-bedroom rental at 25% of area median income, we have 78 persons on the list, 23 at Hunter's Ridge, 55 at Yorkshire. And for the two-bedroom rental community at 60% of AMI, we have 172 persons on the list, 55 at Heritage Glen, 27 at Hunter's Ridge, 12 at Westwoods, 78 at Yorkshire. In all our communities, we only have three, four bedroom, excuse me, four three-bedroom units at 60% median. So in all those units, we only have four three-bedrooms, and we have 41 persons on the list for those four three-bedrooms. So these waiting lists are large, and there's very little turnover. So these waiting lists are many years long. I can't really give you an estimate of that, but they're really very long. I wanted to talk about green building features, but Phoebe, could I impose on you to take this section?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. I'm Phoebe Sager, Vice President of Sager Development, and our office is located at 6th Executive Drive. Drawing on the neighborhood's initiative of health, of which Jeff has spoken earlier, we believe it's important to integrate green building technologies in our proposed development. We see it as a decision that impacts many scales of health, from the individual tenant to our broader development and onward to our greater community. Fostering wellness so that in addition to being able to treat the sick, we can set an example of the positive impact healthy, safe buildings and communities can play in preventative care. From a design and operations perspective, we plan to integrate many sustainable measures in the areas of energy conservation, green building initiatives, renewable and resilient power systems, and digital literacy and connectivity. This development will target compliance with the following certifications. DOE Zero Energy Ready Home Certification, a Department of Energy certification that pushes high-performance and quality homes with exceptional levels of energy savings, comfort, health, and durability. This certification requires and builds upon Energy Star's most stringent rating system, version 3.2. We will also target a HERS or Home Energy Rating System, the industry standard by which a home's energy efficiency is measured, rating of 42. For perspective, a rating of 42 means our development will use, on average, 58% less energy than a new home built to code, and on average, 90% less than a resale home. Lastly, we have designed our proposal to achieve LEED Gold, a comprehensive and rigorous certification globally recognized as a symbol of sustainability, achievement, and leadership. Shannon, do you mind changing the slide? From an energy conservation perspective, we've designed buildings with highly efficient heating, cooling, and hot water systems, and selected windows and doors with high insulated value. Additionally, the building envelope or exterior wall construction and fenestration details have been designed to reduce thermal loss and gain, reducing the need for large external inputs of energy. From a green building perspective, we've worked extensively with our architects, engineers, and consultants to weave together our buildings with the existing landscape and broader community. Our landscape and civil plans minimize turf and thus outdoor water usage, use native plant and seedling species, porous pavement or pavement that allows rainwater to be recaptured, recycled, and discharged, and rain gardens to recapture and treat storm water. We've also planned a soft scape amenity space between the two buildings and provided sidewalk infrastructure to connect the development to the broader community. The materials and resources we plan to use will be durable, environmentally preferable, and low emitting, and we have protocol in place to minimize construction waste and utilize building materials efficiently. In terms of renewable and resilient power systems, we plan to use photovoltaics for both external site lighting and internal energy demand. We also will provide backup power to critical systems, emergency lighting, and potable water. Our buildings will also provide high-speed broadband access to all units, including service free of charge in our community room that will feature a study area for at-home learning.
Thanks, Phoebe. If I may continue, so I apologize in advance because the next section is a little bit technical, but I think it's important. In the past, I've heard concerns from citizens from various towns about the long-term viability of affordable housing. So I'd like to spend a moment just to provide you with the background on the low-income housing tax credit to illustrate its history in fostering public and private partnerships that ensure the long-term viability of the community. The majority of the capital to be utilized for this development is private equity with private investors at risk for the long-term viability of this proposal. The Low-Income Housing Tax Credit is a dollar-for-dollar federal credit for affordable housing investments. It was created in 1986, tax legislation during the Reagan administration, and it gives incentives for the utilization of private equity in the development of affordable housing aimed at low-income Americans. The credit accounts for 90% of all the newly-created affordable rental housing in the United States today. The maximum rent that can be charged, the maximum income of each resident, is based upon area median income, which in this case is Hartford County. The tax credit provides funding for development costs of low-income housing by allowing an investor, which is usually a bank or an institution, to take a federal tax credit for 10 years, and that's equal to 9% of the costs incurred for the development of these units. Failure of the building owner to comply with the applicable restrictions or a sale of the community before it's permitted would lead to a recapture of the credits and the inability to take future credits. So the program structure as part of the tax code ensures that private investors bear financial burden if the properties aren't successful. And this pay-for-performance accountability has driven private sector discipline in the tax credit program, and it's resulted nationally in a foreclosure rate of less than a tenth of 1%, which is far less than that of comparable market-rate properties. So as a permanent part of the tax code, the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program has provided hundreds of thousands of jobs in addition, and those are primarily for small businesses. So I'd like to conclude tonight just by talking very quickly about compliance, and that is to assure you, you may be asking, well, how do I know these units are going to remain affordable, and who ensures that? We perform the compliance monitoring for the income level of the residents and the affordability of the asking rents, and we submit a report at the end of each calendar year to the town staff. Now, these same compliance activities we perform are audited each year by a certified public accountant, the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, and DOH. And if any of those find noncompliance, they report it to the IRS. And if that were the case, it would trigger an audit, an IRS audit. And in the 25 years we've been doing this at Metro, we've never been cited for noncompliance. I believe it's significant to the town that over the years, we do all the compliance monitoring and administration, because the for-sale affordable housing in town, that burden falls to staff, and it's a lot of work. You can imagine how much work it would be in large rental communities. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear this presentation, and I would like to turn it over to Andrea.
Yes, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Phoebe. Madam Chair, I'm actually just passing the mic right over to Jeffrey Board, our consulting civil engineer, who will take the commission through the engineering and site design. Jeff?
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jeff Board, professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Bowler Engineering, located at 65 LaSalle Road in West Hartford, Connecticut. Thank you, Phoebe and Jeff, for walking through some of the existing conditions here and kind of orienting the commission on where we are located. For the purposes of this presentation, north is to the top of page, and our office was responsible for preparing the application before you this evening. What you see on the screen here is just a colorized version of the site plan. We had added the landscaping to this exhibit as well as our zoning chart and some of the landscape regulations. To the north is South Road, to the south is I-84 Interconnect, and then to the east is the fire station, to the west is that residential home. The project's bisected here by a stormwater channel that basically has us before the Inland Wetlands Commission right now, and we've received some valuable feedback from town staff. And I'd like to commend Bruce and Shannon and the rest of the staff for such a thorough review. It's one of the few towns we work with that provides this thorough review upfront, and it really does lead to a better project as we're working through the design here. So the proposed development consists of the two multifamily residential structures on either side of that existing channel. Building A to the west is a three-and-a-half-story, 36-unit structure on the west side with a footprint of 11,350 square feet. And Building B on the east side is a three-story structure with a total of 29 units with approximate footprint of 10,425 square feet. One of the important site elements here, while we have the overall plan up before I go into a blow-up of each, is the sidewalk connection that Jeff had alluded to earlier. Really is the missing piece in providing a connection from one sidewalk to the other and really interconnects the rest of this development. So moving forward, I believe we'll be able to speak to the crossings themselves, and I know Mark's here from Fosse O'Neil on the traffic side. Bruce, if you go to the next slide, I can get into Building A. So with Building A, we have two full-access driveways onto South Road. We're proposing 52 parking spaces, two of which are handicap accessible. We are providing a transformer for the utilities. We have a dumpster enclosure just to the west of the building itself. And one of the interesting features here, and in such a long linear lot, it was fortunate that we were able to go into the level of detail we went into with regards to the stormwater best management practices, which I'll get into in a little bit. But one of the features that shows up on this plan is the incorporation of pervious concrete in one row of the parking stalls. It's a similar application that's been used elsewhere on projects in town, and it's been very favorable moving forward. To the east side of Building A, there's an amenity space that was previously mentioned as well. There's ADA access to that space from the South Road right-of-way, and that sidewalk in the right-of-way has been designed in accordance to ADA guidelines as well. If you go to the next slide, Bruce. So moving over to the east, we're on to Building B. We just have one full-access driveway onto South Road. We're proposing 42 parking spaces, two of which are handicap accessible with a similar section of that porous concrete on the southerly row of the parking aisles there. And again, we did receive a comment letter from the staff that we are currently working through, or received it a week, week and a half ago at our Inland Wetlands meeting. We've basically gone through all of the remaining comments and are confident that we're going to be able to satisfy them. What we plan on doing is issuing the town a detailed response to comment letter highlighting what sheet every change was made on and kind of walking them through exactly, you know, what has changed and how we plan to address those outstanding comments. If you go to the next slide, Bruce. I'll try not to bore everybody with some of the stormwater, but I do want to get some of it on the record here, because there's a lot of, again, natural BMPs, subsurface best management practices that we were able to take into account. What we do from a design standpoint is analyze the existing drainage patterns onsite and basically look to match those. So in this case, on the Building A side, everything flows from north to south, and then along that southern boundary line, everything flows from west to east to that existing stormwater channel. So the way we had designed our stormwater was to basically take the roof water runoff and put it to an infiltration basin just in the front of that parking stall there to infiltrate the first inch of runoff. In addition to that, we have also incorporated porous concrete. As an added measure, we added a perforated underdrain that will help carry any additional water into a subsurface infiltration basin, almost like a belts and suspenders approach, where both of those will be treated and discharged to that southerly property line with reduced flows for the 210, 25, 50, and 100-year storms. And that's a requirement, so we can say that the plan before you on both Buildings A and B are consistent with the 2004 Connecticut stormwater quality guidelines and the MS4 permit within the town. There's also in the front of Building A, or to the north of Building A, there's a small infiltration swale that had come up as one of the comments that we tried to incorporate here. And one of the benefits to the property and what we're trying to do is, right now, it's a curbless road, and part of what we're doing is proposing a curbed edge to this road, similar to the treatment on the north side. And we're taking that stormwater and routing it into two rain gardens on that northerly face of Building A, prior to it discharging via a level spreader into that existing stormwater channel, thus treating the water quality where today it just cheap flows off the side untreated. So it was unique in the sense that on something this narrow, we were able to provide all these different measures. And in addition to that, there's one other piece on the amenity space is also porous concrete, where we were treating water via the porous concrete in an underdrain into the existing swale there, or the existing wetland area. If you go to the next page, Bruce. So similar on this side, we had done something very similar to what we had done on Building A. In the northern face of Building B, there's an infiltration trench that's handling the similar flow coming off of South Road in addition to any water that lands behind the curb and in front of the building. And then some of the changes that we made through receiving feedback during the wetland sidewalk, we'll discharge that to a level spreader in that vicinity. There had also been some concerns on the existing condition of the riprap onsite. We're going to be replacing We're going to be replacing that. It looks like it had eroded away. So we'll be actually repairing some of that existing riprap to its, what it should be out there in the field today. Similarly, the building roof goes to an underground detention system or infiltration system before discharging into another level spreader. And as, as I said, on the west side, similarly on the east side, everything flows from north, north to south, except everything goes from east to west or right to left on the screen to that existing swale. So there's really one discharge point on the entire site. And we're vastly improving water quality and treating the flows that we need to. In addition to that, we've also provided a detailed erosion and sediment control plan, which which has silt fence along the perimeter. It has silt socks, which was a comment that came up through town as an added measure. A soil stockpile with silt fence surrounding that, a temporary construction entrance, and then inlet filters on any of the surrounding catch bases in the vicinity. One of the things that we always include in all of our plans is, and it gets buried in a 400 page stormwater report, but it's an operations and maintenance manual that basically takes all of those BMPs I described earlier and has a maintenance schedule that goes along with it where they're either to be maintained, vacuumed out, cleaned, swept, et cetera. So that's also in our report. I believe it was alluded to earlier as well. We are providing a very robust landscape plan consisting with the town regulations, mixing shade trees, ornamental trees, evergreen shrubs, ground covered. And then New England Conservation Wildlife seed mixes along the perimeter as we worked with wetlands on that. Also would come up, the the removal of invasive species were applicable within that existing stormwater basin. So we had agreed to that. With regards to lighting, and Bruce, we can go back up, I guess, to the overall site plan. Just have something to talk to here. The lighting itself, everything will be IES, dark sky compliant light fixtures. There's, as Phoebe alluded to, are going to be provided throughout the parking lot areas and then along the building to light the pedestrian walkways. I believe that says, in my professional opinion, these plans can be built with, in a safe manner, with no concerns or impact to the surrounding community. And with that, be happy to take questions after we're done presenting. But I'll turn it over to Laura Crosskey at Crosskey Architects to walk you through the architecture.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. And good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I'm Laura Crosskey, President of Crosskey Architects, located at 750 Main Street in Hartford, Connecticut. So Jeff did a good job introducing the project here. And as you saw on the previous site plan slides, the community consists of two different buildings. Building A, the floor plan is shown here. And this is a three and a half story, double loaded corridor building with an elevator and contains three studios, 12 one bedrooms, and 21 two bedrooms for a total of 26 units. The first floor contains a mix of studios, one bedroom and two bedrooms, as well as common areas, including a fave our office space directly adjacent to the main entry, a package room, and at the opposite end of the building, a community room with a study and a kitchenette that leads out to the outdoor communal patio. The second and third floors, the next slide, please. It's a typical second and third floor plan. These floor plans stack with a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedroom units with a common laundry room adjacent to the elevator for ease of access from the floors above and below. And then the next floor plan is the, this is the fourth floor plan, which is built under the gabled roofs and the attic space to maintain a modest building height. And this floor provides five spacious units and a common seating area that leads out to a southern facing roof deck. Looking at the elevations now, you can see we selected a variety of earth toned materials to help visually reduce the scale. The north elevation at the base of the page is the South Road facing facade. This is finished with a canyon mist colored brick above a light gray fiber cement residential siding. The gables are finished with a white fiber cement residential siding. And accent panels at the double windows are a wood look metal panel. Decasement windows and slider doors are fiberglass with a bronze finish. And the slider doors will have Juliet balconies to allow for full, full optimal air circulation and natural light into each unit. Next slide, please. And this is the south elevation. And this shows on the fourth floor, the roof deck, which is about 18 by 15 feet with outdoor seating and southern views. Next slide. We have a perspective rendering from South Road of building A. Moving on to building B, this is the building on the eastern portion of the site. This is a three story building containing three studio units, eight one bedrooms, and 18 two bedrooms for a total of 29 units. The first floor contains studio and one bedroom flats with the direct entries from the exterior. At the northeastern portion of the building is a leasing office area, a package room, and a common laundry room. And sprinkled between each of the first floor units are individual stairways that lead up to two bedroom townhouse units that occupy the second and third floors. This is the second floor plan. The living space with a kitchenette, a half bath, in unit washer and dryer closet, living room and dining room areas are on the second floor. And on the third floor, we have the two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and walk-in closets. While the buildings provide a variety of unit types and layouts, the buildings are quite complimentary. Utilizing the same materials here, building B is finished with the canyon mist brick on the second and third floors and the same gray and white fiber cement residential siding and wood look metal accent panels between windows and sliders. The living spaces here are also designed with the fiberglass double sliders and Juliet balconies and casement windows. Unit entry doors are designed with a unique style to differentiate themselves. And the next slide shows the south elevation. This faces the I-84 corridor. And this is a perspective rendering from South Road of building B. And this proposed community is located amongst the mix of residential and commercial uses and differing architectural characters. The buildings are designed with materials and styles that reference traditional residential Farmington, i.e. the gables and lap siding, while also relating to the more recent commercial developments with flat roofs and brick veneer to appropriately complement the surrounding context. As Phoebe previously mentioned, the proposed community will also be a green community with a focus on healthy housing measures like low to zero VOC materials, high quality air filtering, regular air exchanges, and plenty of natural light and ventilation. The buildings will also be handicap accessible throughout where elevators are provided, complying to the most recently adopted 2017 ANSI standards for accessibility. And both buildings will be fully sprinkled and comply with the most recently adopted 2021 International Building Code. Therefore, these buildings can be built with no safety concerns or impacts. Thank you for your time. I will pass it back to Andrea.
Yes, I'll take it. Thank you, Laura. Madam Chair, again, I'm just passing the mic right over to Mark Vertucci from Fussin' O'Neill.
Thanks, Andrea. Good evening. I'm Mark Vertucci, Senior Transportation Engineer and Vice President at Fussin' O'Neill, 146 Hartford Road in Manchester. Also a registered professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer. And Fussin' O'Neill has done, I think, pretty much all of of the traffic studies over the past 20 plus years for Metro Realty and Jeff Sager in the in the medical area, health center area. And I've been involved personally with with most of those. And I've seen over those, you know, the the past 20 years, all of the roadway improvements that have been completed in this study area that Jeff spoke of earlier. And, you know, all those improvements, I'm not going to go through them all, but they've really added a lot of roadway capacity and improved safety in the area. And that will certainly benefit traffic traveling to and from this proposed development. Just to orient you to the site again, with the site located on the south side of South Road, roughly almost midway between Middle Road and Munson Road. We did look at four study intersections, the three site driveway intersections, as well as a signalized intersection of South at Munson Road. We didn't go beyond there, frankly, because, you know, our site traffic generation is is so low that we really didn't have much of an impact at all at any intersections beyond there. It was a de minimis increase in traffic and it would not have a noticeable impact to traffic operations at those locations. So on the next slide, want to briefly talk about the count data we use. We did obtain traffic counts from March of 2019 at the intersection of South Road at Munson Road. These are pre-COVID counts, so we use those at the recommendation of the DOT to provide a conservative analysis. The counts indicated the peak hours out there are 7:15 to 8:15 in the morning and 4:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. So we subsequently analyzed those highest volume hours of the day for impact. We grew the counts to the 2024 background year. We used 0.8% growth rate at the recommendation of the DOT. And I also wanted to note that all of the recently approved and unbuilt projects or recently constructed projects in the area have been included in those counts. And that includes the the Munson Road Office Building at South Road, which is nearing completion. 599 Farmington Avenue, 55 South Road, a medical office building, 402 Farmington Avenue, a residential development also recently approved, and the unbuilt portion of the Yorkshire condos as well. On the next slide, just wanted to hit on the traffic generation that we expect this development will generate. In order to calculate those rates, we utilize data in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is an industry accepted resource for determining traffic generation. And for this development, we use land use code 220, low rise multifamily housing. And the manual indicates this development, as I mentioned before, will be a low traffic generator, generating 43 morning peak hour trips and 49 afternoon peak hour trips. These rates were approved by the Department of Transportation, also cross checked versus other apartment complexes in the area that we have counted. And they are very close to what sites are actually have been generating. So we're very comfortable with this data. On the next slide, I want to talk about our analysis that we conducted at the study intersections. We compared background conditions without the proposed development traffic to combined conditions with the development traffic. And when we look at intersection analysis, we, the program basically rates the intersection operations on a level of service scale, which is a report card type scale of A to F, where A is a condition of very low delay. F is a condition of higher delay and higher driver discomfort or frustration. Level of service D is typically the minimal acceptable level of service by the Department of Transportation. So at our study intersection of South at Munson Road, the analysis revealed that that intersection's operating efficiently in the morning peak hour at level of service A and also acceptably at level of service C in the afternoon peak hour. And there will be no reductions in level of service as a result of this development traffic. The site driveway exits, all three of them as well, will operate efficiently at level of service C or better. And we had average intersection queue length increases on vehicle length or less. As far as safety goes on the next slide, we did measure site distances from each of the three proposed site driveway locations. All three of those driveway site distances are sufficient to provide for safe vehicle egress. We reviewed crash history in the area. We looked at the latest three years of data from the Yukon Crash Repository. And the data revealed a minimal crash history in the immediate study area. There were no identifiable crash patterns. There are improvements proposed. I mentioned some other roadway and intersection improvements that have been done in the past. But there's also a few, as I'm sure you're aware, that are getting done on the opposite side of the South Road overpass at I-84 with a new roundabout at the south at Colt Highway Two Mile Road intersection. And also the reconfiguration of the ID4 route ramp. Again, those improvements will will only serve to provide safer and efficient, more efficient traffic operations within the study area. We had, Jeff Board hit on this, we we did make a recommendation in the study for the safe, improved pedestrian access and circulation. We're installing the sidewalk along the site frontage, as Jeff described. But on either end of the site, we're also going to be installing crosswalks, pedestrian ramps, pedestrian crossing signage. And those signs will have push button actuation and also a flashing beacon. So the pedestrian pushes button, the flashing beacon will light up. So this, when you provide the new sidewalk and the and the pedestrian crossings, there will be a continuous pedestrian sidewalk, a continuous connection from Munson Road intersection all the way over to the Middle Road intersection and also provide a walking route to the nearest bus stops at both Munson Road and Birdseye Road. So should greatly improve pedestrian circulation in the area. And we do have a slide way at the back showing what this this fashion beacon looks like. If you have any questions at the end, we can, we can take a look at that. So without anything further, just to conclude on the findings of our our traffic study, this proposed development again will be a low traffic generator. The development traffic can be efficiently accommodated by the study intersections. And the development traffic will not adversely impact the safety traffic operations on the adjacent road network. Lastly, I just wanted to mention, Andrea hit on this earlier. We do need a DOT review for encroachment permit since we are proposing work with the crosswalks and the driveway construction that will will be in the state right of way. So the District Four Office will be taking a thorough look at this project as well, should the town approve this project. So with that, I will turn it back over to Andrea Gomes, who's going to wrap, wrap things up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Madam Chair, I'm actually going to hand it, I'm the emcee for the night, apparently. I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Tim Hollister, to wrap up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Tim Hollister, Hinkley Allen, representing the applicant, which has been my privilege for, I think, Jeff, we're coming up on 30 years. We're getting old. Three quick observations. The first is to use a cliche. This development checks all the boxes. And why does it do that? Because it has to. If it doesn't, Jeff mentioned that the low income housing tax credit process is highly competitive. And if it didn't check all the boxes, it would not be competitive for the financing. That's another way of saying that pretty much every detail that you've heard over the past hour is intended to make sure that the application will be approved, not only by this commission, we hope, but also when the the financing application is put together. Because only the best applications get funding. That's why this program is so successful in Connecticut and nationally because the sort of push and a pull, it's the, it's the the financing scoring system that demands the best development and produces the best development. Second, I don't think this was said in any of the presentations, but this is infill development, if you if you think about it, which is a very efficient land use. It's an undeveloped parcel surrounded by development, surrounded by infrastructure, not really conducive to open space. So what do you do with it? You look at it and note that by developing it, it will, it will make, create connections. The sidewalk connection being just The, the sidewalk, uh, connection being just, just one of those, uh, one of those benefits. So, uh, given all of that, it is well-suited uh, to the purpose that is proposed, which is, uh, uh, multi-family housing. And finally, uh, I know, um, that the, the, uh, town and the commission have recently adopted uh, a state mandated affordable housing plan, uh, which you filed under what's known as, uh, section eight dash thirty J, not G, but J of the general statutes where you, uh, uh, planned for affordable housing in the future. And I obviously I'm familiar with that plan, but I think I can say that this is exactly what you intended, eh, when you passed that plan. Uh, and, uh, it's what the, uh, what the town and the state envision, uh, as, uh, affordable housing should be promoted, uh, built and administered for the benefit of, uh, housing choice and economic diversity in housing. So I thank you for your time, and I think we're, uh, take it to the point where we'll answer any questions you, you may have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Shannon, for driving the presentation. And just for the record, I don't remember seeing this presentation. Do, yeah, did I not see?
Uh, well, we, they did an informal, but I, again, I believe it was in July.
Okay.
I believe it was here in July, perhaps. Yes, so.
Okay.
Perhaps. I can't remember. I wasn't a ton of that nice, but there was an informal presentation at the end of a very long evening.
So I should look back and it's available. It's interesting.
But it's the same, it's the same, uh, property makeup. It's the same basic layout. It, it's very, there, there's very little that has changed from the informal. Just the details have evolved.
Got it. Mm-hmm. All right. Thank you, everyone, for the presentation. Um, you covered all of the bases clearly. Um, I was a recipient of the printed materials. Um, thank you very much. It was much easier to go through everything, um, using the printed materials and the plans. And then we're going to continue anyway, right? So we'll have a chance to uh, come back with any more questions. So.
Certainly.
Patrick, without further ado, um, your turn for questions or comments?
No, just, uh, great presentation, very thorough, and I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay. Mike?
Uh, a few questions. Um, certainly appreciate the need for, uh, affordable housing. Um, I think this is a good start. Um, what other properties would fit into this potential, um, South Road Opportunity Zone?
Commissioner, I, I can answer that through you, Madam Chair. For the record, Andre Gomes, counsel for the applicant. Uh, when we, i- if the commission takes a look at the South Road Opportunity Zone as it was originally proposed in our September materials, the, uh, regulation was really crafted to be almost site-specific so that it would not apply to really anything beyond our three parcels, the subject parcel, uh, the subject property here. In consultation with, yes, where the mouse is hovering over, thank you, Shannon. Uh, in consultation with town staff, we actually expanded the regulation just a bit so that it could, and I, I don't speak for town staff, Shannon can certainly, uh, chime in here, but we expanded the regulation a bit to essentially encompass the properties that are abutting the parcel to the, our subject property to the east and to the west. Uh, keep in mind, as I mentioned earlier, the site has to be within two, between two to five acres within the Yukon Health Center area and has to abut the, um, Interstate eighty-four or an interstate highway. So it's fairly limited. We opened it up a little bit so that, uh, it could potentially be developed on either side.
Would that apply to the, uh, one eleven South Road property too?
Yes, it will, Mike.
Okay. And that's currently owned by Metro?
It is. It is, uh, my understanding, or a subsidiary, yes. Um, and then it would also, the way the wording was crafted, should these properties ever sell in the future or those owners choose to redevelop, it has the potential to apply to those as well. And that those changes were made, um, as Ms. Gomes suggested, uh, at my request.
Yep. Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to clarify what else would be eligible for that. Um, so the, the, the prices on the, uh, affordable housing units, um, I saw that. I apologize if I missed it, but, uh, is this all affordable housing units or is it a mix of market rate?
So Commissioner, I can chime in here, and then certainly Mr. Sager can, um, supplement as, as needed. The, the goal here is to have twen- thank you, Shannon, twenty percent of the units be market rate and the remaining eighty percent be affordable.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, I missed that. Um, we, we've approved a lot of other projects recently, and a majority of them are, um, studios, one-bedroom, not a ton of two-bedroom units. Um, what would you consider the impact to be on the number of schoolchildren that would be in this, uh, in this development?
Certainly, Commissioner. So, um, first, uh, just for the record, putting my lawyer hat on, if I may, uh, schoolchildren and impact to school districts is not, uh, a relevant consideration for land use decisions. With that being said.
Curious question.
No, no, I understood. I just putting it on, you know, my lawyer hat has to come in somehow. Um, so putting it, uh, with that being said, typically you don't see many schoolchildren in one-to-two bedroom rental units. Um, I, I, I believe that the, um, informal number that we had discussed and looking at some of the other properties, uh, associated with these applicants was you'd see maybe ten to fifteen children approximately here. But again, it, it'd be fairly minimal. Um, and, uh, eh, again, not a relevant consideration for land use decisions such as these.
Eh, Andrea, may I speak to that as well?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Also, just to back up for a second, excuse me, excuse me for not knowing this. One eleven South Road, that's the UAW building?
Yes.
Yeah. Our, our intention is that that be a medical office building and that, you know, that corner has, so we built five Munson Road. On the corner, we want to do one Munson Road, and then UAW, we'd like to be a medical office building as well. That's the plan. So in any event, I can tell you that at West Woods, which is thirty-four two-bedroom units, we have twelve children, school-aged children. And I can tell you at Heritage Glen, which is sixty-eight units, we have eighteen school-aged children. So West Woods is thirty-four two-bedrooms, Heritage is fourteen one-bedrooms, fifty, fifty, two-bedrooms, and four three-bedrooms. And three-bedrooms generate school kids, for sure. Um, and there's a total of eighteen in that development. So if I just applied the math, you'd probably only get six or seven schoolchildren here, especially in light of the fact that for fifteen years you have, um, fifteen units that are reserved for favor. But then in addition to that, I would offer you that my experience has been people say, ah, that number's too low. That can't be true. So I would say Andrea's number of ten to fifteen is probably more accurate, in my professional opinion. And you know, outside, we have a total of, I think, eighteen of these communities and, you know, four in Farmington, but we're in, you know, Avon and South Windsor and lots of other places that have good school districts, um, Canton. Uh, so I'm giving you the same answer, but a little more color. Uh, ten to fifteen. If you really pushed me and said, could it be twenty? I would say, yes, it could be twenty. So that's, that's the best answer I can give you.
Yeah, thank you. Again, just a curiosity question.
Yeah.
Um, do you have a photometrics plan?
Yes, as, as part of our, our resubmission package, we will be providing that photometrics plan that has the luminaires, the fixtures, the, the fixture details and, and the like. So that will be coming.
Okay. It just asked, there's a couple houses across the street, so. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mike. Good questions. All right, Scott, you're next.
Thank you. Um, and thanks for the great presentation, very thorough. Um, one sort of minor question, I think, that area in between where you referenced the water course, is that wooded?
Yes.
Witted?
That is wooded and, and to remain wooded. So we, we took, um, care to, to limit the development with, within those areas and worked with the Wetlands Commission, uh, and town staff to, to do our best to stay away from those areas. So there'll be that natural wooded area remaining in between the two buildings.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Matt?
Uh, hi, thanks. Um, so don't read into any of my questions, but I just want to ask for the benefit of the public hearing. So why affordable housing? Why not make these market rate? Right? There's a lot of units coming on the market that are market rate. You know, every week, there's an article in the Current about new market rate apartments. So why affordable housing in this section of town?
Com- Commissioner, the, the best person to answer that, certainly. I could, I couldn't do it justice the way Mr. Sager will, so I'll ask Jeff to actually pitch in on that, please.
Sure. Um, I, I believe I covered most of that, um, but just to go back through it again. Um, you know, we've been active in this neighborhood for twenty-five years, and I'm probably bored you to tears with that, but in any event, uh, it's really kind of about time I got around to this, frankly. Um, Yorkshire, which is kind of in the neighborhood, is affordable as well, but that's senior. So this is affordable family housing. I think the fact that we did wait, though, while all these other pieces came into place, like the bus stop, like the development on the campus at the Yukon Health Center, like the development of our medical campus, each of those things kind of validated more and more, you know, the overall social benefit of this entire neighborhood. And, you know, to me, made it very obvious for the need for affordable housing. Uh, I regret that frankly, I took ten years off, uh, from constructing affordable housing in Farmington. Um, you know, it's, it's been a long time. Uh, and the need just gets more and more and more, but I wasn't able to compete, in my professional opinion, I wasn't able to compete for the funding. So, you know, the need for affordable housing, the simple answer to your question is the need is off the charts. The need just will never be satiated. No matter what we do, no matter how committed we are to it, we're never going to get there. But notwithstanding, it's important that we take these steps to do it. And there's, you know, a dramatic need. I mean, I talked about the benefit of, I talked about all the area has to offer. The Housing Authority has a huge waiting list. The waiting lists we keep at Metro are five hundred names. And keep, keep in mind, a lot of people, when you go to take their names, say, oh, you've got five hundred names on the waiting list? I'm not even going to give you my name. I'll never, you know, you'll never get to me. So the need is really very, very profound. Um, it's certainly one of the most worthwhile things that I do in my professional career. And, um, you know, I, I raised my kids here in Farmington and and, uh, I actually lived in Heritage Glen for eighteen months when I was renovating this home. Uh, and, you know, my kids went to East Farms and Robbins with the kids from Heritage Glen. And, um, you know, I mean, I see what my kids had in Farmington, and I want that for, for other, others as well. You know, and, and I know the kids that when they were in Heritage Glen, I knew the kids that were there, and I know them now, and I, I see the benefit. I mean, a low-income child that goes through the Farmington school system, you're going to break the cycle. That child is not going to live in affordable housing. And that's what it's all about. You know, it's the education, it's the job opportunity, the transportation to get you to the job opportunity. So kind of a long-winded answer, but there it is.
No, I appreciate your, uh, uh, answer to my question. So you, you, you mentioned the funding source, right? Like, a lot of this is dependent on um, tax credits and, and I guess just for me, curious, like, w- why isn't there more private equity funding available? And, and kind of why do these projects need that sort of extra public assistance?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So I'll bore you again. Um, you know, back in the day, everything went through HUD. And, uh, a congressman by the name of Jack Kemp, who was put in charge of HUD, convinced Ronald Reagan, two very conservative guys, that the way to fund affordable housing was through, was to privatize it, was to make, uh, you know, not to do turnkey developments where the government's in charge. It was to make it so that private individuals had accountability, and, and that's what this is. So they took it out of HUD, out of the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and put it into the Internal Revenue Code, section, uh, sixty-two, I believe, of the Internal Revenue Code. And in so doing, you know, you get the teeth of the IRS, you get the private investors. And another thing that banks do is they constantly have what's called CRA audits or Community Reinvestment Audits. So it is in their interest to invest in these, uh, and to demonstrate that they're not just loaning money to rich people, they're also loaning money to do good for those of lower income within the community. So oftentimes, they are the buyers of these credits. But it's really been great, um, in my experience, that you're dealing, the, the allocating agencies are the government. But then once the allocation is made, you know, you have a conventional loan and you have the equity that is invested. Historically, I've done it with JP Morgan, uh, with People's Bank. Um, it tends to be an institution, um, but it is a private investor and it's private equity. And they get the tax credits so that they're looking for the, their return on capital uh, through the channel of the tax credit and not through the development. So in other words, instead of having to load the thing up with debt, you have a lot of equity there, and you don't need a return on the equity because the investor is getting returned from the tax credit. So that enables me to bring the rent down low. Uh, again, I.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
No, no, I, I, I appreciate that. Uh, just, just one more for me. Attorney Gomes, you touched on this, right? So if there's an elementary school in this area that's already at or over capacity, we can't assume that's a substantial public health and safety issue. Is that fair to say?
Correct, Commissioner. You hit the nail on the head.
Great. Thank you very much. My, my last one was, um, um, has the, has, uh, this is maybe this, is the inland wetlands taking a site, sidewalk of this yet, or is that still TBD?
They have, Commissioner. I, I don't have the exact date in front of me, but they did do a sidewalk.
Great, thank you. N- no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was the date of the sidewalk.
Yeah, it was, uh, sorry, uh, Tony Hollister, the date again, please?
September twenty.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth. Okay, I knew it was September. I just couldn't remember which date. Perfect. Thank you both.
Yep, thank you. All right, uh, moving right along, Liz, your turn.
Uh, well, thank you for the very thorough, very detailed approach. I also got the hard copies, which made it very easy to work with and study this. And I think all my questions have been asked. Thank you.
All right. And James?
No additional questions for me either. Thanks.
All right. I have questions, and they're not in any particular order. Um, yay. Thank you for bringing this in front of us. I, I do believe it's time also. You know, it's kind of odd, um, looking at real estate right now, uh, Hartford County is actually more affordable as compared to the rest of the country right now. But we definitely have a need. And you know, if you live in town, you should be able to afford to, excuse me, if you work in a town, uh, you should be able to live in that same town. So thank you for bringing this in front of us. And I hope you get the funding and we'll be driving by. Um, so que- first question I had was, so the whole text amendment language, do I, the September twenty twenty-two, is that the latest we have, or is there more coming, or?
No, and that, so there is, uh, another update that's in my email, but I'm also aware that there were site plan edits going on that may have required further.
All right, so more.
So, but this is, it's close, that text amendment is substantially well, it, it did not change drastically.
Okay. And now that you asked my question, I wasn't sure if I have the latest. Since I did not, um, remember having the slides, remember? But that's okay. All right, hold on, let me go. I'm okay. I'll have more questions for the next meeting. Um, but I will be on a lookout for revisions. So.
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, ju- just to be clear, so we worked with town staff and Ms. Rutherford and the rest of the team on revising the regulation. We submitted that version to on revising the regulation. We submitted that version to Ms. Rutherford last week. Uh, we will certainly include that and any subsequent revisions that may or may not need to be made uh, as a result of the revisions we make to the plans in response to staff comments. We'll submit that as part of our supplemental materials package in advance of the next public hearing. So the commission will be clear on the most up-to-date version.
Got it. Thank you. Um, so I had an initial question about the units, but what's in building A versus B? I was wondering why there was no laundry on the first floor on building A, but that's where the favor housing will be. Is that, is that the reason for that?
So, Madam Chair, I will hand that over to, um, Ms. Kroski, the architect for, uh, the applicants.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, so as far as the laundry rooms go, we are following the CHFA guidelines as far as the number of washers and dryers um, provided for the number of units that we have in each building. So the second floor and the third floor both have laundry rooms and those provide washers and dryers for the first floor, second, third, and fourth floor units. Um, the package room on the first floor is to service the entire building A. And it's in the location on the first floor where the laundry rooms are on the upper floors.
Okay. All right. Like, I understand, um, it would have been nice, I think, um, that's okay. The roof deck, is it accessible to everyone in building A?
Yes, that will be accessible, uh, via the elevator. So that will be accessible to everybody in building A and building B.
Okay.
The common amenity.
Okay. Yep. Okay. I was just more curious about that. Shannon, you probably did your count. I meant to count the units. Are we good with the count?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. In, uh, my document is version two. So it's tab two, page three. It says solar panels. I did not hear solar panels today.
Madam Chair, tab two of our September 19th, page three.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I will, I will hand that over to, uh, Ms. Kroski or maybe Mr. Sager or Ms. Sager can actually expand on that.
Okay.
Um, Andrea, maybe I'll take that. Madam Chair, um, that is a work in process. Is that fair to say, Laura?
Yes, we've been discussing that. With the, um, energy consultant as well as our MEP engineers.
Yeah, the, the plans are very far along, but with all these green features, it's kind of like building a submarine. And we are, um, getting to that, uh, but we're not there yet.
Consider, yeah, it got me very excited considering that heating and cooling is electric, uh, according to what I'm reading. It, I think it would be a great feature, but I understand what you just said. Thank you.
Well, we're, we're, we're going to do it. We're just not there yet.
All right. I am not really understanding the sidewalk, the pedestrian. So I happen to be doing business in the area and it was kind of crazy. I went on South Road, did whatever I had to, uh, I actually was in Hartford, came back. And these two women were walking and they were stuck crossing. And I was gone probably half an hour, so they must have done a pretty sizable loop. But they had a really hard time crossing South Road. Can you show me the pedestrian crossing and is it really connecting to all the other sidewalks or? I hope it is.
Madam Chair, just give me one moment. I believe we had a slide on that.
You probably did. Thank you.
I think maybe we could show the site, the site plan. Um, shows the crossings. It's kind of small to see, but you could point them out.
Okay. Well, I know one gets, uh, we can see one, the other one gets caught. Oh, no, here we go. So here's one.
Right. So Mark Vertucci again from Fosse and O'Neil will just explain this. So the sidewalk goes along the, the site frontage on the, on the south side. And then, um, what it's going to do is continue easterly and then, and then there'll be a crossing, um, just east of the fire station there. Uh, so new pedestrian ramps on either side, a crosswalk, uh, the signs and the push buttons and the flashing beacon I described.
Yeah.
And right where the pointer is there on the north side of the road, this aerial is old, this image in the background, but uh, this is where the, the new medical office building is going there on the northwest corner. And that has a new sidewalk along it. So it will connect to that and then over to the, uh, the intersection of South at Munson. So on the other side, it's the same deal. Uh, we're, we're installing another crosswalk with, with new ramp signs and push buttons and beacons. And that will, um, connect to a sidewalk, which I believe that Ariel's not showing that sidewalk either. Was that was, that was recently installed on the north side of South Road heading westerly towards, uh, the middle road intersection. So.
Okay.
I talk about a continuous sidewalk, um, that's, this will enable that.
Madam Chair, if I may, if, if, um, Ms. Rutherford will just toggle. Perfect. Slide 12 shows essentially the missing connection. If you look where the, the mouse is hovered over that red section there, that's the site frontage that Mr. Vertucci just described and you can see the remaining connections, uh, in, I believe it's yellow.
Mm-hmm. Perfect. Thank you. All right. I, yeah.
Yeah. So this is, this one, this is already, this frontage is in with 55.
Perfect. Perfect. Okay. Love it. Good. Not to get into finances, but, um, you know, I definitely picked up on, you know, the process or, and I'm, you know, familiar a little bit with, uh, the, um, the way, uh, what, what's available, but I, I guess if you don't give the fun, funding, like, is this dead or like what happens in June if for some reason it's a no? I'm just more curious than anything.
Absolutely. And Madam Chair, I will have, uh, Mr. Sager, uh, expand on that answer.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. So in all the years I've been doing this, um, if you hang around long enough, you'll get funded. And, um, you know, your odds get better the second year or the third year, but we don't have any debt on this property. We own this for the long term. We're committed to it at this site. So it is very much our intention in the event that we don't get funding to just keep going back until we do.
Okay. Good. Good. I hope so. All right. Um, do you have to, uh, blast in this area to fit in the buildings?
Jeff, I, I see you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Ma- Madam Chair, we have retained a geologic consultant and, uh, the answer to the question is, we don't know yet. I certainly hope, I certainly hope not.
Yeah, just, yeah. I, I won't say what I'm asking. Okay. No, that's fine. Hold on one second. I'm just going through whatever I highlighted. Um, in the back of, uh, so I think it's building A. So you have the I-84. So there's a retaining wall in the back? Or what's the back like to the highway?
Yes. So I, I could touch on that. So just to the rear, south of building A, we had these at-grade patios that we had shown and one of the comments that came up from town staff was just the proximity of that retaining wall um, to the property line. And we're looking at a couple of different options, uh, in concert and coordination with town staff. And the goal being is that we may end up going with just a deck, um, material that's just elevated. So that will be part of our response to comment package and then updated plans in the back. But in reality, it'll just get less intrusive if we were to go that route. As opposed to doing a retaining wall. But in either case, we can engineer it to work. So we're confident we'll come forth with the best option.
Okay. Thank you. And I am so grateful for you being so kind. I am literally just going through notes I took at various times. So nothing is in order. Um, so let's say this building is in place, um, you know, it's owned, um, by AD South Road or whatever we've been calling it. So if the property transfers, it stays as affordable housing? Is that how I understand it or no?
Yes, Madam.
Oh, go ahead.
Madam, Madam Chair, Jeff Sager, um, we have warranted that it would remain affordable for at least 40 years. And that absolutely does run with the land. So if it was sold, it would, the commitment remains.
Okay. And, uh, we talked a little bit about, you know, the waiting list, both that your company has at the various projects and uh, our own Nancy Parent. Um, how do you see that working out? So we clearly have more demand than what we're going to get here. Are we able to offer it to Farmington residents? Like they've been on, on the list forever first or? I don't even know if there are regulations on how you can offer this type of housing.
Uh, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'll, I'll take that. Um, I had, uh, committed to get an answer to whether, so we can't give priority to Farmington residents. What we have done in the past is to give priority to persons on the Farmington, uh, Housing Authority waiting list. I still don't have a clear answer if that's still permissible. Tim, do you happen to know that? Or Andrea?
I'm not sure. I'm going to look to Tim. You're muted, Tim.
Yes. Hi. No, no, that's permissible.
Okay. Yeah. So we, um, I'm, I'm going to take a little bit of a caveat here though, because the regulations that I'm subject to are very long, uh, but, uh, we've done it in the past. I just, I need to confirm that, uh, I'd be able to do it again.
Yep, I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, but we, we've worked, we worked with Nancy Parent day in and day out. And, and with people on the waiting list.
Thank you. Um, regarding the income, I did not notice our income limits or maximums. I did not notice the studios on that list. Is that by design? Is that a legal thing?
I, I'm sorry. I missed that, Madam Chair. You didn't notice what?
Uh, let's see, it's that 80.
Yeah. So the pricing.
Pricing, not included studios.
It, it discussed one bedroom.
Oh, yeah.
Breakout for studio.
Yeah, my bad. Um, it would be about a hundred dollars to a hundred and $50 less than the one bedroom, uh, but I'll have to get you that.
Or, or added maybe or right?
It's going to be about 5% less.
Right. I understand. Okay. Um, we already said that we're plenty of demand, but it, will we have a situation, let's say if there are no viable applicants, right? Because there's going to be an application, you know, all kind of screening, will you rent? The, let's say you, you don't have enough to fulfill the 80% affordable, will you rent to market rent or this will always be affordable?
Uh, Madam Chair, let me make sure I understand the question, Jeff Sager.
Sure.
Uh, are you, are you talking specifically about those units that are reserved at 80% of AMI?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the event that, no, we wouldn't go up, i.e. more affordable, we might take somebody who was slightly less affordable. In other words, they weren't at 80, they were at 79, 78, 77, you know, whatever it was. Does that make sense? That. Yeah. So, so maybe.
I think that, so if I, if I can, let me see if I, let me see if I can translate. Hang on. Um, that your concern is that there is not a viable applicant for the affordable housing.
Right.
I can tell you with almost a hundred percent certainty, that's not going to happen.
Right. I, I know.
So that's not like.
It's not a situation.
It's not even anything a- at any point is, so even if we do, because even I, as I'm, I'm processing ours for the homes that come into play. We get for every home that goes on the market, probably 20 to 30 inquiries of those. There are some that don't meet the requirements for a variety of reasons or can't provide the required documentation. Um, so they can't be certified. But there is always.
A lot more.
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Can, can I also, if I may, Madam Chair, provide one clarification? Cause you raised an interesting question. So, and, and I didn't make this clear. Um, so when it says 80%, it means not greater than 80%. So it could be anywhere below. And when you say 50%, it means not greater than 50%. It could be anywhere below. So it's not dead on 80. It could be 80, 79, 78, 77. So you see what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep. That's, that's good. Assuming the project moves ahead, will we be, what will be the percentage, Shannon?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. So right now we're at 7.82 for the town.
Oh, I.
Are we going to be close?
Well, no, because well.
I don't even know what that means.
Well, because they, the numbers are constantly changing, right? So not only, we've got a numerator and denominator of this equation.
Yep.
Right? So we have a thousand market rate apartments that just came on, well, that are approved. Nothing's on the books yet.
Yeah, there's nothing.
So if nothing else comes on, right, we now just dropped by whatever, uh, percentage point.
Okay.
Right? So now these are going to come back on and assist. So it's constantly in flux.
Okay.
And then as Mr. Sager noticed, there's time, some of them are not in perpetuity. So some of them phase out over a specific time. Mr. Sager's indicated his is for 40 years.
Yeah.
So there's a few that we have that may time out here shortly. So this is, this is mathematically, not a constantly moving target, but it is certainly not static.
Mm-hmm. Well said. Thank you. Uh, and then I think almost at the end, the traffic study, I'm not sure if I understood it correctly, but did, was the traffic study really just Munson and South Road?
Madam Chair, I'm going to ask Mark Vertucci to step in on this, please.
Yeah, Mark Vertucci again from, uh, Fosse and O'Neil. Yeah, I, I mentioned, uh, at the beginning that given the low traffic generation, uh, we didn't extend, uh, the, the study intersection analysis past the immediate site driveway intersections in South at Munson Road. Uh, we're really only adding about, uh, 20 trips or so at the, at the intersections further west and, and further to the east. Uh, so that, that amount of traffic added really doesn't have a noticeable, uh, impact, uh, when you add it to what's already at those intersections.
Where am I going with this?
Well, I'll, I'll say is staff, staff provided a comment, pretty much, uh, recognizing the comment and statement Mr. Vertucci just made, but asking nonetheless for a written statement regarding the intersection of Patrick Flood and South Road and South Road and Middle Road as part of the engineer's comments that were issued. So, yeah, I'm not, notwithstanding, um, and I believe that was reflected in the comment, but I think a written statement regarding those two intersections for the record is warranted. Yeah, just warranted because of the area and the, uh, heavy traffic patterns through the area. Although I do, um, recognize it is likely not a concern.
Yep. I agree.
Right. And, and we, we are preparing that response. So we will.
I am all set. Oh, I guess. Thank you for being patient. All right. And it is 10 o'clock and it's a public hearing?
It is a public.
Yes. So we need to see if anyone is still on the line with us that wishes, actually, we did have correspondence, right? Right before the meeting?
Uh, we did, we did. And let me, um, but we do.
Sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Let's, if somebody's called in, let's hit that real quick. So uh, if anyone has called in that wishes to speak regarding this application or have questions regarding this application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom and you will be, uh, acknowledged to address your comments to the commission. Again, if anyone has called in regarding the AD South Road application, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the com, uh, the commission. All right. Madam Chair, there are no, uh, doesn't appear to be anyone wishing to comment online. And we did, uh, we have public correspondence came in today, uh, believe went out to the commission and the applicant.
Yeah.
Uh, came in from 13 Farmington Meadow Drive in opposition as shown here on the, uh, screen and is part of the record and has been shared.
Perfect.
And then the only other item of correspondence that Attorney Gomes already. And then the only other item of correspondence that Attorney Gomes already made reference to was the letter that came in from Crog and that was also part of the record and is.
I did give that one.
No, right here, I can't find it.
No.
Um, it came in as part of the record and is positive, made a positive comment, um, again, as Attorney Gomes mentioned at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So those are the only two written items of correspondence. Appreciate.
So thank you again, uh, commissioners, we, this application will continue, you know, we'll need a motion, uh, in a second. Do you have burning questions this evening or you wanted to save them for next time?
Anyway, well, anything, we've already gone through everybody. So if there's anything else that needs addressed this evening?
Okay.
Everyone, so motion in a second.
Yes, yep.
All right, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing regarding the application by eighty South Road LLC and Sager Development LLC for amendment to the zoning regulations to add the South Road Opportunity Zone, SROZ, change of zone from B one, R forty to SROZ and site plan approval for multifamily residential community proposed pursuant to CGS eight dash thirty G for properties located at sixty-two South Road lots eighty-eight, sixty-four and eighty-eight, eighty, South Road.
Matt Wagner, second.
We're good, Shannon?
Yeah, yeah.
We're good, okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so, uh, this application continues. What was your question?
No, I just, uh, no, motion to continue. We're good to, to November seventh. We're all set.
Thank you, all presenters. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right, uh, planners report, we have a few items.
Uh, we do, I've got something quick for everybody, please, so.
And, yeah.
Yeah, well, we've got a couple of things this evening, so yeah, everybody just hang on for me. Uh, seventeen Pinnacle Ridge, hang on a second. Don't anybody get motion sickness as I drive, fly through town here. Uh, seventeen Pinnacle Ridge was before the, uh, commission in May to renovate their home. They demolished the garage. They were putting in a new garage with a walkway and a, um, a yoga studio on the second floor of the garage.
Okay, yes.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then there was a walkway connecting from the yoga studio into the main portion of the home. So they've poured the foundation, they have some foundation walls in and then decided that they needed everything a little bit bigger in the garage. They needed a little more storage room. And they wanted to go two and a half feet out towards the rear of the, uh, the garage rather than two and a half feet out towards the front. I've been out, I've spoken with them at length.
That's right.
A sizable oak, I believe it's an oak tree here, ochre, it's oak, uh, here. And, um, the tree canopy, the drip line of the tree is currently right at the edge of the foundation. This has already all been excavated. We've already all had equipment back here. Material's been removed, put back, et cetera, backfilled. So I told them if they're going to go out the rear and expand out the rear, they need to come back to see you. And if they come out the front, then I will address it administratively.
Yeah.
So they've decided, um, to come out the front of the building and they will leave the rear intact as, as done. So they will, they do want the expansion. It'll still get them the, the room that they need for the storage within the building. Uh, it's just going to change that front and bring it out a little further. Um, my concern had been the health of the tree, given that we are right on the ridge line.
Yeah.
So, uh, if no one objects, then I will allow this to proceed with the expansion to the front of the garage. It's going to be somewhere between two to three feet.
Yeah.
So it doesn't hit our expanded home even with that expansion, so it doesn't trip into a different permitting scenario. Uh, nothing else has tripped, so.
Does it look weird or?
No, it'll be fine. And they've got to do, I mean, that's, there's some certainly additional work to now put a new foundation wall to, for an extra three feet, but that's their issue. So, uh, so if there's no objection, then I intend to allow this to, to proceed with the expansion to the front of this new garage.
Thank you for staying out of the vision, Shannon or the applicant. I have no issue with it. How about anyone?
No issue.
No objection.
Okay, call away after ten, then shut down. Thank you for, um.
Okay.
Yep, go Shannon, go.
No, and then, um, Complete Streets is going to be on the agenda for November seventh. Uh, Bruce is tired of waiting.
And naked.
And so it's, it's a bicycle advisory committee, so, uh, so that's going to proceed to, on November seventh. Um, and we're also puttering with a couple of other zoning items that, uh, hopefully we'll be able to chat with you about them. Um, that is all I have officially for planners report.
So we're going to do minutes, we're going to adjourn and we're going to say.
Hang on for a sec.
Hang on for a second, everyone. So we need a, a motion in a second to approve minutes from last time?
Uh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I want to make the motion to approve the minutes of the October twelfth, two thousand twenty-two Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Listen for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. Thank you. Meeting adjourned, ten sixteen.